Michael. Zoning Board for Appeal Hearing for September 13, 2022 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the Board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2023. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the Zoom Webinar Event Platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the Public Notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means that you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the Board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom Webinar Platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select Yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand. You must press *6 to unmute yourself again after you receive the request from the host. Again, if you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand, and *6 to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. I will request that as soon as you've put your comments in the record, please lower your hand so that the meeting host knows that you have had your chance to have your say. Also, I will request that if there are, if you are speaking and if somebody else has already stated your reason for support or opposition, please just state that you are in support or in opposition and put your name and address on the record. Use your time to give us new information. Before we proceed, I'd like to thank Costa-Liguis for his service on this Board as a representative of the Real Estate Board. He has tended his resignation as he has other pressures on his time. So we thank him very much for his role and his thoughts as we move through a number of cases, especially in the hard times where we went to remote. Before we begin, let me take a roll call. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Regiro.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Olick.
Here.
Ms. Dong.
Morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Hampton from the BPDA.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. D'Amico from BTD. Okay, Mr. Fortune, the chair, the...
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of July 26, 2022.
Motion approved.
Um, Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro? Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, so motion carries.
Calling the first extension, calling DOA 836-636-603 Dorchester Ave. Name and address for the record, please. Is there a Mr. Meyer on? There's someone on for 603 Dorchester Ave.
Paul, let me see, Paul Bakari. I don't see if he's on here. I know Paul isn't a butter. Stephen Meyer, I don't see the attorney.
Let's move on, please.
Calling the next case for extension, calling DOA 905-438-64 Nelson Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. My name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm with a business address of 199 Hunter Street in West Roxbury.
Thank you, Mr. Cludier. Regarding 64 Nelson Street, the Board originally granted this relief on October 11, 2019, and it granted the first extension of relief until October 11, 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, this relief remains valid until January 16, 2023. The applicant now requests a further extension until October 11, 2023. I recommend that the Board grant this extension if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that it would be the applicant's first necessary extension.
I'll make a motion to extend until October 11, 2023, and that's inclusive of all applicable tolling.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, so motion carries. We request that the applicant do make their best efforts to proceed with the project.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice day.
Madam Chair, we do have three raised hands. I don't know if this is in regards to 603 Dorchester Ave. Find that out.
Yeah, I just sent them chats. Joseph, I just sent you a chat. I'm not sure if you're receiving them. And Paul? Paul?
Hello, this is Joe. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, Francis. So my chat is disabled, so I can't answer you.
Okay. Are you here to present on the case?
Hi, Francis.
I will be at some point.
Hi, Francis. This is Paul Sullivan, Counselor Flaherty's office.
I just, I just need the applicant, please. If we do not have the applicant on, let's move to the next project, please.
Madam Chair, what would you like me to do? Would you like me to redid it for the record or no?
Let's just move on to the next one. Can you hear me?
Yep. Calling Board Final, calling Board Final Auditor, calling DOA 126-0823-76 Wyman Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Sarah Ewing, and I'm the owner of 76 Wyman Street, Unit 1.
So, Ms. Ewing, tell us why you're here.
Sure, so on May 24th of this year, I came before the Board where a decision was made to grant my application for a relocation of a curb cut, as well as a construction of a parking pad to the left of my house. That was with the note that I would work with BTD to, quote, "limit impact to the street." And from my understanding of the conversation, that meant to ensure that I removed the old curb cut on my property before...
Did you speak to the BTD?
So I did. I reached out and received an email back from Bob D'Amico, apologies if I'm misconstruing his name, that he did not agree with the project. And when I explained that this was to simply work with him, that the Board approved the project, and this conversation was to simply work with him to limit impact to the street, I never received a response back from him, and therefore reached back out to Stephanie here at the Board to understand what my next steps were. And she said I needed to come back to the Board for a final decision to perhaps remove that note or to work further with you for a better solution.
Um, let's see, is Mr. D'Amico on? Um, Mr. Hampton?
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. I don't know anything about this case. I'm looking through my notes now just to see if there's anything else.
Um, I know Mr...
Yes, I can jump in too if we, if we need to. So I reviewed, I reviewed the case. It was heard, it was approved. It is for a closure of an existing curb cut that leads to nowhere, the opening of a new one that would be combined, I guess, with the neighbor property that also has a parking pad on their right-hand side. Mr. D'Amico's comments were, you know, that we're private, this is privatizing a parking spot, and no one parks in, or you're allowed to park in front of a curb cut to nowhere anyways.
Francis, this is Joe.
So, you know, I think it's one of these cases where we're not exact, I mean, I can't understand where it's falling in between the cranny.
Yeah, I mean, the notes that I have, Madam Chair, is that the Board considers this that it was a wash, it was a one-to-one replacement, so...
No, I just want to make sure that when the Board puts in provisos for, for action by either BTD or the BPDA, that there is follow-up and that it doesn't end up in, you know, a black hole. So may I request that the BTD, because that the BTD follow up with Ms. Ewing to bring closure to this? May I have a motion, please?
I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to remove the proviso.
No, I want to make sure that, in fact, when BTD, when the Board of Appeal, this is, this is an important thing, that the, that the staff doesn't just do what they need to do, that in fact...
I, oh, I, I agree, I agree. But the applicant is also getting caught in the middle of this, and I don't think that...
Yes, and that's why I'd like to have it into the BPDA's hand to bring it to closure swiftly.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to...
Um...
Remove the BTD proviso and make it a BPDA proviso.
Exactly, exactly. And Jeff, please make sure that, you know, is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric.
Okay, Fortune?
Yes.
Regiro?
Yep.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, so motion carries. Sorry for this runaround, Ms. Ewing, but, you know, we just want to make sure that in the long run you are protected, so let's move on. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Calling the next Board Final Auditor, calling DOA 126-6730, 418 Cheney Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, I'm Kendra Halliwell with Icon Architecture. I live at 21 Lee Street in Jamaica Plain. I'm the architect working with JPNDC on 418 Cheney Street.
Is there a representative from JPNDC on, on this call, on this meeting?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Ricky Gata from JPNDC and Rebecca Cloud-Moutner, Director of Real Estate at JPNDC. Business address, 71 Gerania Street, Jamaica Plain.
Okay, so I have, I have a note to mention to the JPNDC, please to request that you please do not bring projects to us unless they're fully vetted. We have a long list of applicants waiting to be on the agenda, and this is, what is it, the fourth time that you've appeared with this set of projects, and we anticipate that you will be on a fifth time or something like that. And this is very time-consuming for us as a Board. So bring your projects when you have more completely worked them through. This is not a test run when you come to us, you know, so I will, I have to put this out to you, both on your projects in JP and then this project in Roxbury. So, and especially when you're proposing a subdivision, the Board's standard operating procedure is to look at the subdivision in totality and not just half or a portion of it, okay? So just to put you on notice that this, this is not, not the way we'd like to see business done. However, on this one, did I understand that there are minor changes on 48 Cheney Street? So please walk through and tell us what those minor changes are.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We've made a few improvements. We've reduced the unit count from 59 down to 48 units. We also pushed the building back from the street by approximate, to approximately 40 feet back from the street, creating a front yard area for the residents to use. We've also widened the sidewalk as part of the base project. We've also shifted the entry driveway, which used to come in on the front of the building. We pushed back to the downhill side of the building, thus also creating a greater front yard. So in sum, there is less relief requested. The relief that is requested is an increase to the front yard setback, which does call for building face alignment. And as you can see, we pushed it back significantly to create this open space in working with the community through discussions. And then additionally, by reducing the units, we have also reduced the FAR, but we still request relief on FAR. So those are the two areas we're looking for.
So tell me about the entry driveway. Was it, wasn't it on the other side of the building?
It was, it was on the, it was right where it says landscaped gardens. The driveway kept right in the front of the building there. So now we've pushed it down, and then it turns and comes in the side, so we don't have a garage door in the front of the building anymore.
And it looks like there's a curb cut, and then there's a short, a short sidewalk, and then another curb cut, is that right?
Yes, yes, there's an existing curb cut just below, at the bottom of the page here, yes.
Okay. May I have a motion for approval with design review?
I'll make a motion to approve with the BPDA design review.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, so motion carries.
Calling the next case of building code, case DOA 136-4200, 4 Dartmouth Place. This is construction of a new roof deck by a single-family residence. Violation of 9th Edition 780 CMR 1011, stairway, 1011.12.2 roof access toward Penns House. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good morning, it's Michelle Hediger, and the address is 4 Dartmouth Place.
But tell us what you're proposing to do.
So I'm here as well, this is Carl Hediger, I'm the licensed construction supervisor and homeowner. And essentially, the code is for a headhouse above a staircase, and what we have in its place is a fully compliant staircase with a mechanical hatch that lifts up and provides unimpeded passage to the roof deck.
And it's direct, and this is directly out of your unit?
Correct.
And how many units in the building?
It's a single family.
Oh, sorry, single family, of course. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, very straightforward, is exactly as he says, no comments, questions.
Okay, and is it visible for, no, I guess it's okay. Proposed roof deck, is it visible from the street?
It is not visible from the street.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, so motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we go to the 930, is it going to go back to that extension?
Sure.
Calling case DOA 836-636-603 Dorchester Ave. Name and address for the record.
Paul? He's just, I don't see Stephen Meyer over here.
Okay, let's make a motion to postpone it to the next hearing.
Close to the next full board meeting.
Can you hear me now? This is Paul Flaherty from Reuben &amp; Redman on behalf of Steve Meyer.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, you got your name and address on the record?
Madam Chair, I'll take my motion back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, sir, hold on, sir.
Attorney Paul Bakari from Reuben &amp; Redman at 53 State Street in Boston, on behalf of Steve Meyer, who's out of the country, who just asked me to sub in for him at the hearing. I had enormous...
Hold on, hold on, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Regarding 603 Dorchester Ave, the Board originally granted this relief on August 23, 2018, and it granted a two-year extension of that relief until August 23, 2022. With tolling, this relief would have expired on November 18, 2021, so the prior extension encompassed all tolling. I recommend that the Board confirm for this record that the grant the applicant's second request for extension if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances.
And this, and I'm sorry, Mr. Fortune, what, until what date?
Um, sorry, Madam Chair. So the, I would believe, would do August 23 of 2023.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. I'm, motion to August, what was that date again? I'm sorry.
August 23 of 2023.
Motion to extend until August 23 of 2023. That includes all applicable tolling.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson? Arajo is also in support...
Sorry, Robinson is aye, sorry.
Okay, so motion, motion is approved. Please make sure, Counselor, that this project continues to move, move into construction. Thank you.
Going to call the 930 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals to 930? Give me the address first, please.
14 Gardner Street.
Thank you, Counselor.
Ward 21.
I'm sorry you said that?
It was Ward 21, just if it makes it easier to find it.
So on page five of the agenda, Mr. Fortune at the bottom?
I'm 14 Gardner, okay, I'm sorry. Regarding, quick case DOA 136-7246, 14 Gardner. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago, and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking a deferral for a full board.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Second. Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support. The date, please?
I believe we'll have a full board on October 25.
Thank you.
1130.
Okay, and, and thank you for reminding me, Counselor, of this, today we have a six-member Board, and you need five, any applications need five members to be in support of, of the project for it to carry, thus you are entitled to an administrative deferral should you wish to choose that. That may change the, the number of deferrals we have, but I, so go ahead, anybody else who's here requesting a deferral?
Any deferrals or withdrawals to the 930? Can you give me the address first, please?
Mr. Secretary, 273 Maverick along with 279 Maverick, please.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding case DOA 114-4072, 273 Maverick Street. There's a containing case DOA 114-4075, 275 to 279 Maverick Street. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Madam Chair, I believe we need to renotice this matter based on conversations with the Board staff. We're hoping for a date of October 25 based upon our conversations.
May I have a motion, please, for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, so motion for deferral carries. The date, please.
And you do have a date of October 25 at 1130.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals to the 930 case? Okay, hearing none. I'll follow the first case, calling DOA 128-9450, 36 Colburn Road. This is a construct, a new multifamily, 11 residential unit, common roof deck, and ground loadable pocket with nine vehicles. Violation Article 51, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 51, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 51, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded by two and a half back. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient side setback. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient regot setback. Article 51, Section 9, maximal height has been exceeded. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient front setback. Article 51, Section 53, screening and buffering. Article 51, Section 8, use and regulation, 11 unit is within. Article 51, Section 56, insufficient parking. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney John Plugini, business address at 10 Fourth Road, together with Josh Betterman and Eric Zacherson, who's the development architect. The 36 Colburn Road, writing, brightened, the zoning is two-family, 5,000, lot size is 6,863 square feet. This proposal is to raise the existing building and construct a new 11-unit condominium building with a common roof deck and nine osprey parking spaces internal to the building. The internal parking will be accessed by a curb cut on Colburn Road that will travel to the rear of the building and access the internal parking.
Um, hold on, hold on, Mr. Plugini. Can you tell us what page we should be looking at to understand the scope of the project?
Um, so this is what the, obviously, there's a colored elevation that you're looking at right now. If you go to the second page, you will have the site plans and floor plans. There is the basement parking floor plan.
Mr. Robinson, help us and tell us which is the best plan to be looking at?
I, you know, I think the plan...
Eric Zacherson's on the call. Eric Zacherson's on the call, Eric, you could comment on this.
Well, Mr. Zacherson, let's, let's move, okay?
All right. I was trying to become a panelist. The question is, what is the appropriate site plan?
What's, what's the right page to look at to understand how the, how the building works on the site?
Okay, yeah, this one right here. At the, at the top of the page, you've got Colborne Road, and on the right side, you've got Houston Road. On Houston, you would enter a one-way path that would come along the back of the site. All the parking would be open to the rear, and there would be an exit, a one-way exit onto Colborne Road. And on this floor, you would have the, the parking, the nine parking spaces, and the lobby, the bike room, and the trash and recycling.
So, tell us how, you're proposing screening and buffering on the site, and tell us how it works and context of the neighborhood, because this is a two-out 5,000 district.
Correct, and, and on the...
And, Mr. Pugini, you, you should jump in as a part of it.
Sure. If, if, Eric, you would just want to start with the screening and buffering, I'll get into the whole context of this building.
Yeah, we've agreed to have a privacy fence along the two, to, two side, two kind of side yards or, or rear yards off of Colborne. But along the front of the, the building, we'd have landscaping, which you can kind of see in the rendering here, with a mix of planters and, and some green space. But the buffering along the back of the building would be a six-foot-tall privacy fence.
Okay, any trees proposed for the site? I mean, we keep talking on one side about climate change, et cetera, et cetera, and then we keep, you know, putting up, you know, we do a light touch on the screening and buffering.
There, there is not space for a tree, a tree to...
Or anything, anything more substantial. Okay, and tell us about the, the roof deck?
So, the roof deck is a common roof deck, Madam Chair. It is accessed by stairway as well as a lift.
Okay, and it's by a separate hatch, is that what I'm seeing here? I mean, a, a separate...
Headhouse.
Penthouse? Yes?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And there's no possibility of having that penthouse attached to something else?
So, one of, the, the common roof deck is required to have two eggs, two means of egress. And so, one of them is connected to the elevator headhouse, and the other is connect, would be freestanding.
So, one's connected to the stairwell, one, one to the elevator?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then tell us about the units, how they break down?
Sure, Madam Chair, on the ground floor, I'll just start there, there's no living space, it is parking in a bike room. On the first floor, overall, we have five three-bedroom, two-bath units with an average size of 1,030 square feet. Four two-beds, two baths, with an average of 827 square feet. And there are two studios with one bath averaging 455 square feet.
Okay.
And I will just touch, because you did bring it up, Madam Chair, very good question. Although this is located in the two-family district, if you look on your tablets there, you'll see that this proposal is surrounded by a mix of buildings, including many very large multifamily residential buildings. Additionally, it's...
Yes, I know, I know it, but it's in an MFR district, so, yeah.
And it's also 200 feet from the B Charlie Station.
Okay, so, did you say it was three bedrooms, three baths?
Three bedrooms, two baths, Madam Chair.
Bath, okay, got it.
And if I may, I, I just would like to just talk a little bit about this. So, through the community process, originally, this was an apartment. It was changed to homeownership, and we will provide a large three-bedroom, family-style affordable unit, condominium unit, together with a financial contribution to the city's Affordable Housing Fund. Also, we will be eliminating, there's a huge curb cut that you could probably see on the existing condition plan, that will be closed up, and we'll limit it to a 10-foot curb cut for access.
Okay, and can you talk, tell us why there is, why you're proposing to give to the fund rather than provide any additional affordable units in, in Brighton?
So, it would be, normally in a situation like this, it would be, because of the mix of units, it would be a two-bedroom unit. So, through the community process, we decided to give the larger family-style unit, because that's what the community asks for. So, there is the affordable unit that we, the condominium unit that we're giving. In addition to that, we will give a financial contribution to the IDP fund.
And do we know what the number is of that unit? The, the specific, whatever it looks like on the plans currently?
Yeah, well, it would be the large three-bed, so it would be over 1,000 square feet, three-bed, two-bath.
Which unit is it, because we would like to memorialize that?
Unit eight, is that it?
Unit four or unit eight, I believe? One is a, they're just, they're the same.
Will you bring clarification to the ZBA staff so that it can be put into the record?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
How, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine, you know, I guess I have some questions about the size and density of this project as it sits in its current location. It is on a street with other bigger buildings, I will agree. But it also is a corner condition that is linked, and also has a hill on the side street that doesn't appear to be accounted for in the drawings. If you go to the elevations, there's basically a 15-foot brick wall that runs along the entire site on both sides. And I guess I'm just a little confused on that sort of approach for this somewhat residential neighborhood. And then I do have a question on the roof deck. The roof deck's only 1,000 square feet, so you could eliminate a headhouse and reduce that, I mean, to below 49 occupants, and you could get rid of the roof hat, or roof hatch, or, I'm sorry, roof headhouse that is on the street, which is also exacerbating its size. So, I'd be interested to hear a little bit about that, and then I guess I'd also like to hear a little bit from the VPDA on their position on this.
Can I hear from the applicant first?
Eric, do you want to speak to the roof deck and the possible...
We could, we could reduce the size of the roof deck, the common roof deck, and eliminate the, the headhouse as was requested. It was not one of the major points of contention during the discussion with the neighbors. And so, we've kind of, we've drawn this and had not had, had not had that be a request. But we could certainly look at that and do that if that was...
So, we would accept, accept a proviso.
Hold on, hold on, this team has come to this board often enough to know about this board's position on roof, on, on penthouses. So, please, you know, try and forestall any questions and issues we may have with this by addressing it ahead of time. Go ahead, can you go ahead and address the rest of the questions, of Mr. Robinson's questions?
Regarding the, the density?
I think he was providing a wall that was around.
A wall, the density, the, the context, the, the context?
As was mentioned, the, the rear wall, we don't feel is going to be terribly visible. It's going to be open to the, to the parking spaces. There is, along the front, there is a, a wall that we're planning to have a landscape in that zone between ourselves and the property line. And we have a landscape plan, which may or may not have been included, but includes planters and green space.
There is a landscape, Madam Chair. If you scroll down, Madam, there is a...
Yeah, I, I know, the question is, okay, so, what's the rear yard that's required, and what are you proposing?
So, the rear yard's 30-foot requirement, we're at 13 feet 4 inches.
Okay, so that, Mr. Robinson, may give you some sense, because I'm with you, that it's, it is kind of creating this, this barrier and impacting the abutters, you know, negatively because of the height of the building.
Well, I, I think it's, I mean, the hill, I'm, I'm not as worried actually about the rear, because it does slope up, I understand that. I'm just, this street presence does not seem to be conducive with. And I understand screening the parking, but I guess, I would hope that it would be a little bit more knitted in into the corner, into its relationship. And that's certainly something we could put to the BPDA on a proviso, but I think there's some work here. And I guess the BPDA is recommending approval with design review, which, if that's okay, then I think we can do that. But I think there needs to be some real work done on this to make it actually fit within the context of the neighborhood, so.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Afternoon, or good morning, Madam Chair, Frank Mendoza, Alston Brighton Liaison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services here to report on the community engagement process. The applicant had an abutters meeting in March where no major concerns were expressed. They obtained the support of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, and we have on file for them five letters of support, one letter of opposition, the letter of opposition from a member of the broader community and not an abutter. Thank you very much, and at this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board.
Good morning, this is Maureen McCray from Counselor Riddin's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in support of this project with the understanding that this is a condominium project with one IDP unit. If possible, the Counselor would also like to request BPDA design review, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have a few letters of support, a couple of letters of opposition.
Madam Chair, I have five raised hands.
Can we start off with Annabelle Gomes, please?
Yes. Annabelle, you've been unmuted.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. The BIA voted to support this project with BPDA design review.
Annabelle, is this the street that Mary Palte used to live on?
No, I think she lived off of this street, on one of the little side streets, I don't think she actually lived on it.
I thought she had a Colborne address, okay. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ambassador, let's, let's take the other raised hands.
Jenna, you've been unmuted.
Good morning.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Madam Chair, my name is Jenna Lau, I live at 38 Colborne Road, so I am an abutter, a neighbor, and I oppose to the building of this building.
What is your opposition based on?
My opposition is based on most of the houses on our current block are two families, and this is a very big building, if it was to be constructed for it. And there is parking already, situation on the parking street where condos are taking up parking spots. So, with this building, it's additional fighting over spaces, and there will be more people within our current block for it.
Thank you.
All right. Jordan Abrams? You've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hello, Jordan Abrams, for Ransom Road, just across the street from the project, in support and appreciate the addition of some affordable housing, and appreciate...
Just note that there's one affordable unit, so this is a note for anybody else who wants to make a comment, you know, that the, the rest will be marked, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Mindler? You've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, members of the board, my members representing the Carpenters Union would like to go on record in support of this project.
Andy, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, my name's Andy Bauer, I live at 72 Houston, around the corner, lived there for years. Parking has been brought up a little bit, I wanted to mention, my building has a parking lot and it's never full. I take the T, part of the reason why I live right there, close to the T. I think that building could use some sprucing up as well, may, may make the neighborhood look a lot better. And of course, although it's only one...
Guys, I assume you are in support?
Yes, in support, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, one more, Peter, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Herbert Yee, I'm actually speaking on behalf of Peter's son. I also reside in the building next to the proposed construction, if the Houston Road. I'm definitely concerned about the, the parking situation. And obviously, it's being built directly, because we share a border, so it's built directly next to us. The initial construction is definitely a major concern. As I, I do have two, two young children that play in the backyard, front yard. And then also for the future, you know, residents that will be moving in, there's definitely noisy, noise, noise concerns, traffic.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, may I hear from Jeff Hampton, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We did recommend approval with design review. Mr. Robinson, we echo your concerns on the wall going up the hill. I'm sure that we can have some significant design review on that to soften it. And we also want to focus on some usable open space, especially being the corner lot. So, we are on the record as in support of this project, thank you.
So, I just wanted to, just to find out, Mr. Hampton, that the, that given the fact that this is a two-family 5,000, and there are a number, it, it is for this side of the street, two and three-family, that the BPDA has no issue with going with an 11-story building, with 11-unit building with all these violations?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay. So, we've heard from everybody, may I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, but I do think it needs significant BPDA design review for scale, massing, screening, open space, and just sort of its relationship to the abutting properties. But the homeownership part is something that I appreciate, and that's it.
And Mr.?
Me?
Can we always talk about penthouses?
Okay, you're sticking it out there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and the removal of the headhouse.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
Is it the, is it the removal of the headhouse, or the whole?
So, I think that, I think he's going to need, I, I mean, if it's going to be a publicly accessible headhouse, he needs the elevator to go there. And the, there is a second headhouse on the back of that building, that's adjacent with the elevator. I think you're going to have to keep one due to the size of the building as well, so.
But keep the roof deck, that's my...
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with the roof deck, as long as we get rid of that front headhouse.
And, and so, basically, your bottom-line comment is that it needs to be more contextual?
Correct.
Talking about scale, massing, relationship to abutting?
Agree, yes.
Okay. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Rajiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 132 7725, 62 Liverpool Street. The companion case, open code BOA 132 7736, 62 Liverpool Street. This is a change argument from a three-family to a six-unit residential dwelling by a regular addition with roof deck renovating the existing building. Article, the violation, Article 27 T-5, this is in the East Boston I block. Article 32, Section 4, G-Cod applicability. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily while use is within. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Article 53, Section 56, must be packing with sufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the additional odd areas, sufficient. Article 53, Section 9, employee ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive deep. Article 53, Section 9, using open spaces is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, a backyard is insufficient. This is for 62 Liverpool Street. This change argument from a three-family to a six-family residential regular addition with roof deck renovating the existing building. Violation is the ninth edition 780 CMR 1011 stairways. 1011.12.2 roof access, where stairway is provided, building roof shall be provided for penthouse complying with Section 1510, point two, point. Name and address for the record.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linds, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, I believe we have building code as well as G-Cod to address before...
Let's, let's start with the building code, and then we'll, we'll listen to the G-Cod.
Sure, so with respect to building code, consistent with the board's position on headhouses, we are proposing a roof deck. In connection with this project, we are proposing not to incorporate headhouse and therefore access would be by hatch, which does require a relief under the applicable provisions of the building code.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the building code relief for the access to the roof deck.
Is there a second? Fortune? Fortune?
Aye.
Rajiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also, aye, motion carries.
Excuse me, is there no opportunity from the abutter to comment?
Hold on, please, can everybody be muted? Let's go now to the case. It's been called into the record. Let's hear from Mrs. Seminelli.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Seminelli, Boston Brownwater Trust. And we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
You have those letters as well, Madam Chair.
Okay, so Mr. Lins, please go ahead and talk about the project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a, if we can jump to Slide 3, actually probably a better site overview. That slide's perfect right there. We can see the surrounding context of the area. Our building is that brick building to the middle of the screen behind the tree. This is located just outside of Maverick Square, so within close proximity of our T station. We are proposing to take the existing structure, which is the pre-existing three-family structure, and convert that to a six-unit dwelling with a complete renovation and vertical addition. As you can see from the surrounding context, there are a large number of multifamily and larger buildings in the immediate vicinity. We do bore the waterfront commercial zone, which has a much more flexible.
Hold on, hold on, councillor, can you please tell us which is the next drawing so we can understand what is being required?
Sure, why don't we go to Slide 8, showing the rendering? So the proposed condition, as I mentioned, would include a vertical addition, which is that fourth level that we see here, in addition to the roof deck that is not accessed by head house. If we go to Slide 11, that's an important one to show the context of the surrounding site so we can see that the existing building, the existing limits of the existing building. So this is a corner lot on Copper Smith Way in Liverpool Street. The building currently does occupy the entire site, so many of the violations that are cited under Article 53 relate mostly to the existing conditions of the building, including things like open space and stuff like that. We do propose to set back our fourth level to allow for the reprogramming of the entire building. The building is relatively old, so upgrades to both life safety and the actual interior of the building would be a good, you know, a good choice for this particular location.
So councillor, let's find out how you're moving from three to six.
Sure.
Tell us about the unit sizes and the number of bedrooms.
Sure, so with respect to the lower two levels, we are proposing to reprogram it with each of them being studio-sized units. So each of these are all in excess of 525 square feet, which is actually more than what is required for the recommended unit sizes for studios. The upper levels, both levels three and four, are bi-level, two-bedroom units, generously sized at over 1,100 square feet each. You would enter into the third level for those units and have an internal stairwell up to the fourth level. The roof deck would be accessible by those upper-level units only. So we do reprogram the existing three levels and then add that fourth level to make some additional living space for the upper-level units.
I'm sorry, so there are two studios and how many two bedrooms?
I'm sorry, four studios, two two-bedrooms.
Four studios and two two-bedrooms.
That's correct.
Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are fine. I do have a quick question. How are you achieving accessibility now that you're at six units? You have stairs going up.
So I do have Mr. Zacherson, who was the project architect, who can address that question or concern.
Yeah, Mr., sorry, Mr. Robinson. The building is an existing residential building being renovated for residential use, so I do not believe we have to, we have group one accessible units.
Even if it's got rehired?
You're exceeding the, you know, the 30% of the assessed value, over 100,000. You have to bring the whole project up to code, I believe. But we'll leave that to you, that's a building code issue, so.
And now, Mr. Robinson, just to confirm, there's no occupancy in the basement?
No, not that I see.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process. Our office held an abutters meeting for this project on March 8th. The abutters expressed some concerns regarding the setback of the building and comments about the height and potentially eliminating sunlight and the lack of parking in the area. Our office received eight letters of support from abutters. The project also was presented in front of the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association on April 19th. That group decided to oppose the proposed project. With that information, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have four raised hands.
Madam Chair, before we go, the secretary here, we do have letters of support.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Luke, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Can everybody please hustle along? It's almost 10:30 and we need to make sure that we give other people on the agenda adequate time for their projects to be heard.
Hello, Luke Bowen, 28 Maverick Street. I'm about a half a block away from the project and am in support of this project. Thank you.
Right. Michael Underwood, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Michael Underwood. I'm an abutter with less than 100 feet away from this project. I am opposed to this project.
What is your address, Mr. Underwood?
My address is 78 Liverpool Street.
Okay, and what is your opposition based on?
I believe it will have a negative impact on the neighborhood as all the residential structures are three stories. This is totally out of scale with the buildings on Liverpool Street. Parking is a major issue and this presents a negative parking situation. And I also believe this is compounded by the fact that the the same developer plans to build a five-story next door to that very building and a four-story behind it. And I think the future does not look good for this neighborhood if we continue on like this. Thank you.
Michael Sellers, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Michael Sellers. I represent the ownership group at 56 Liverpool Street, two doors down from this project, and just wanted to go on the record and say that we support this project.
Thank you. Sean Serantino, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Morning, my name is Sean Serantino from 169 Maverick Street, and I just want to say I'm in full support of the project.
Okay, a question for councillor is 56 Liverpool Street, one of the projects, one of the sites that this developer proposes to change occupancy on?
No.
Okay, okay. And so, you know, we've heard from you often enough, Mr. Lins. So when you come in with those other two projects, is this going to be stated as the precedence?
Oh, my God. I can, in dislocation with Madam Chair, there is a proposal that is going through the community process. That 60 Liverpool is not next door, is across the street from Copper Smith Way, has a vacant lot, it is in a separate zoning district that actually has a 55-foot height limit. We are still working through the process on that, so we're not, we're not going to be talking about precedent with respect to that. But I would point out, based on the site overview, there is height in this area, there are four and five stories surrounding this property pretty much in all directions, in addition to the vet building located directly across the street from us, which is about seven stories.
Okay, given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Can I add no building code relief to deal with the questions that Mr. Robinson made?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can I just clarify that that's not relative, obviously, to the head house issue?
Not the head house, but it is to accessibility.
Understood, thank you.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also, aye, so motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1331-686, 1721 Washington Street. This is a revisal to take out, used for this petitioner only. Sari Lakhlaton and Sunpo Luton and their business Equator to new operator PNY Ventures doing business as unit kitchen. No work to be done, the violation is Article 6, Section 4, revisal to the petitioner only. Name and address for the record, please.
I didn't have anyone, Madam Chair, I didn't have anyone signing, so I'm gonna try to see if these two raised hands are. Patrick, you've been unmuted. Are you here to present on the case?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, 1721 Washington Street?
Yes, hi, my name is Patrick Doo and I'm the new business owner at 1721 Washington Street. Was just trying to get rid of this proviso attached to the old restaurant owner and no work to be done.
So no work to be done, but a change of name and business ownership from Equator to Yunan Kitchen?
Correct.
Okay. And this is, and you are familiar, have you run any restaurants with takeout before in the city of Boston?
Yes, I have. I owned a noodle restaurant in Brighton for six years.
Okay, okay, so let's see, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions from you.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Hi, yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Curzilli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board at this time. We have received no opposition from the abutters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Assistant Commissioner Michael Flaherty, on to go on record in support.
Madam Chair?
I'll be outside.
I have one raised hand. Or two. Alita? Can you state your name and address for the record? Alisa? Alita?
Hi.
Hi, are you here to present on the case?
Not on this case, but I have a meeting later.
Okay.
No, no, okay.
Send me a chat, a message on the chat.
Given, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with standard takeout proviso. And for the petitioner only.
Thank you. Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also, and supports, a motion that those two provisos carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now 10:31. I'm gonna call the 10:30 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals. Give me the address first, please. This is for 10:30 only, deferrals or withdrawals.
Yes, good morning, my name is Jonathan Gold.
Address first, please.
This is 4011 to 4019 Washington Street.
Hold on two seconds. Calling case DOA 1094129, 411 to 419 Washington Street. Name and address for the record.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. It's, my name is Jonathan Gold. I'm the attorney of record. Its address is 873 Beacon Street, Boston 02215. And I'm here on behalf of Neil Gold and 40119 Washington Street LLC.
Are you requesting a deferral?
Requesting a deferral.
For what reason? Go ahead.
We, when the plans, when the plans in the application were originally submitted to ISD and then on to the board, we have not yet completed the BPDA planning process, which we have since done. So there are some minor differences in the plans and certainly the project, and we would like to provide the board with the most recent plans, the revised plans, and so we're seeking a defer.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to defer.
Is there a second? Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also, and support the date, please.
We have a date of November 1st at 11:30.
Okay, and while we are on this, before we hear from anybody else, just a reminder, we have a six-member board. For approval, you need five members in support. So you may avail yourself of an administrative deferral. Until such time, there is a full board. Go ahead, Mr. Fortune, sorry.
Is there any more deferrals or withdrawals for the 10:30 cases only? Give me the address first, please. Eric Dono, go back to the 9:30. Calling DOA 1332-058, 143 East Cottage Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family. Add floor area sufficient within the existing footprint of the building and closed one-inch parking space. The violation, Article 65, Section 65-41.5, parking size and maneuverability, and Article 65, Section 9, floor area ratio excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Corey Bradley and the address is the same as the project address, 143 East Cottage Street. As you said, I'm proposing converting my house from a two-family to a three-family and adding level square feet within the existing footprint. And the district here is 3 of 5,000. The project would consist of me splitting a portion of space from the first floor and duplexing it down into a finished basement. This would also involve me fully sprinkling the entire home and adding a central firearm system.
So tell us first if there is proposed occupancy in the basement and second, if you are proposing to split that ground floor, what is the proposed size of the units?
Yes, so I am planning on having liberal space in the basement, and I know that is a focus, so I do want to draw attention to the size of the openings in the basement. They are wide, double-window, four and a half by four and three-quarters square feet in each room. And another important detail, that foundation sits up just under five feet from grade. So they are entirely above grade. There's no window well, no obstruction there. They're full-height windows, which will get a lot of natural light on the lower level.
And you're proposing one parking space? Do any of these windows open into the driveway?
They do not.
And where is that parking provided?
The parking provided is on the left in an existing driveway.
And what's the lot size for this?
I'm sorry?
What's the lot size for this building?
The lot, the lot size is 4,594. Correct.
And tell us about the context. How many other three families are on this street?
There is a, if you're looking at the product from the front, there's a two-family to the left and then a string of six or seven three-families. So it fits within the neighborhood context.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine. I didn't believe them when I saw them, so I went by actually yesterday. It's right around by where I live. It is true, the site does fall away and the floor is up, so I do think this is a case of, I'll say, lower-level garden units that will have adequate light. There's no, doesn't appear to be a need for a window well as well, and they are not on the driveway side. So I think it is, as the proponent is explaining, and I see no real issues with the proposal at this point.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process. Our office held an abutters meeting on July 11th. Director abutters were present and indicated they were in full support. They would like to see the owner to stay in the neighborhood. They also have support from the Upphams West Side City. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeckren, City Councillor, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have letters of support.
Okay, and you have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also, and supports, a motion carries. Arajo also in support, some motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA one three three four one three seven two seventy-five Hobbs Street. Calling companion case BOA one three five nine six three eight two seventy-three Hobbs, this is for two seventy-five. This allows vehicle access, proposed parking at two seventy-three Harv, overcoming passageway shared by two seventy-three, two seventy-five Harv. Violation Article fifty-three, section side yard is insufficient, Article fifty-three, section fifty-seven point seven, side yard of certain narrow lots. For two seventy-three, direct a new four-story multi-family dwelling, contains four units, two parking spots at the rear of the building, access to a proposed easement shared by two seventy-five and two seventy-five R Hobbs Street. This is to create one new two thousand four hundred thirty-eight square foot lot, the existing structure be raised. Violation Article twenty-five, section five flood hazard district, Article thirty-two, section thirty-two dash four, this is groundwater, D card. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off the parking, Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off the parking, is insufficient on the side. Article fifty-three, section eight, uses the fifth, Article twenty-seven T dash five, this is in East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six point five, parking maneuverability, Article fifty-three, section fifty-seven point two, conformity with an existing building line. Article fifty-three, section nine, the additional lot area provision. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor area was excessive, Article fifty-three, section nine, the building has excessive story. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building has excessive beat, Article fifty-three, section nine, even walk-in space is insufficient, Article fifty-three, section nine, side yard is insufficient, name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago, uh, with business address of eleven Beacon Street, Drago Toscano. Um, here on behalf of my client, City Realty, uh, as was discussed, this is a proposal to combine two lots at two seventy-three Harv, to raise the existing, uh, structure that's uninhabitable, and direct a four-story residential building with four units and two rear parking spaces.
And so, hold on, hold on, Counsel, so this would be a lot that's two thousand four hundred and eighty-three square feet?
Correct, this is a three and a half thousand.
And let me find out, Mr. Semenelli, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, Secretary, we have eleven.
Okay, so we, we, thank you for, Mr. Semenelli, so, uh, Counsel, these are a lot of violations, please talk us through and tell us exactly what, um, what page we should be looking at to, uh, understand the project, and also confirm for us that all habitable space is above, uh, flood hazard zone.
Yes, so, thank you, Madam Chair, so, I think the next, uh, slide, uh, yeah, that, that shows the units, um, but just to point out, Madam Chair, this project was before this board with this applicant, a little while back, we were denied without prejudice based on, uh, Mr. D'Amico's BTD comments, and we were asked to remove a space. Uh, we went back through this, originally had been four units with three parking spaces, and the board and Mr. D'Amico believed that that was too tight for maneuverability, so we went back to the community process and removed one of those spaces, so, um, that, that is just to point out, uh, the reason that we brought this back with the changes, um...
Now, for the Madam Chair?
Yes?
Mr. D'Amico has spoken this, and it's regarding the parking, um, do you want me to put on the record?
Please do.
Yeah, okay, regarding two seventy-three, two seventy-five Harv, um, Ward one does not have any curb cut on the plan, also the request for parking in the rear has, has very poor maneuverability.
Okay, so, um, since that seems to be the, the, um, the concern continues to be the concern, just let's focus on the parking and tell us how that's proposed to work. However, I would like you to put on the record, um, the units and the unit sizes, please.
Sure, um, so the unit sizes, just do that first, so there is no useful space in the basement, Madam Chair, it is in the flood district, and gee god, there's only mechanical, it's common mechanical space. Uh, as we get up to the first floor, uh, there's the main entrances, a one-bedroom, one-bath at seven hundred and twenty-five square feet, it also has an accessibility lift. Um, second floor is unit two, nine hundred and seventy-five square foot, three-bed, two-bath. Third and, uh, third floor, unit three, nine hundred and fifty square feet, three-bed, two-bath, and then finally, the fourth floor, um, unit four is a thousand square foot, three-bed, two-bath. If we could go back, um, to address your comments about the parking, um, we have a common, this is perfect, we have a common passageway between us and two seventy-five Harv. Um, there is, uh, there is not currently a driveway there, we'd be proposing to put in a ten-foot driveway that would lead to the back of the property. Um, the difference is, uh, from the last time, is we had three spots across on the back, uh, Mr. D'Amico had asked us to remove one spot, um, and so...
So let's just focus on this, so you're telling us that the driveway is ten feet, or, and what's the curb cut supposed to be?
Ten feet.
So the curb cut is ten feet, and what's the, and what's the driveway?
Ten feet.
Okay, so you're not sharing the driveway with the Abutter, then?
We are, so, and that's the use of premises, uh, or...
Okay, got it, got it, and so if I, if I was, if I pulled into space number two, how would I get out of that space?
You would back out of the property, Madam Chair.
You would back around that corner, would that, is that enough space, you think, uh, without, um, crossing the, the property line back out with that edge of the building in there?
Um, I believe so, I mean, it's ten feet across, um, and there's, it jogs in at the back, so, I mean, it is, for this particular area, it is a good-sized driveway.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are fine, no real question on the building, so is the, Abutter at two seventy-three, they don't seem to have parking in the back of their house, or any, or, or two seventy-five, sorry.
Two seventy-five, they do not, right now.
Right now, okay, so that's something that they're, so you will be sharing that sort of use?
So right now, it is just a common passageway, we both have rights to it, and we're just adding it to traverse to our parking, by way of...
Understood, okay, um...
Any questions from the board? Mr. Olick, you've been very quiet today.
Mr. Robinson's asking all my questions.
Okay, got it.
I don't believe it, but, okay, thank you.
If anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, this time the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board, to back our information on the community process. Uh, this applicant went before the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association and received their unanimous support. Um, there were some concerns raised by Butters at the Butters meeting regarding the proposed height, um, parking and, uh, density jumping from a one to a four. Um, some expressing that they prefer an as of right project, three units, uh, with that, we defer to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have orders of support.
Mr. Ambassador, any raised hands?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPTA's aggregate.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, some motion carries, I'm assuming, Mr., um, Hampton, that you look and, to make sure that nobody, there's enough room so nobody backed into the building?
We'll try our best.
Okay.
Thank you, members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one three three eight two one five, sixty-seven to seventy-one West Cedar Street. Combine occupancy of twelve units from three buildings, sixty-seven, sixty-nine, and seventy-one, then change to a seven-unit, uh, structure. Full, full gut renovation of the building, violation of Article thirteen, section thirteen dash one, dimensional regulation, Article fifteen thirteen, section one, the floor ratio is excessive, Article thirteen, section one, side yard is sufficient, and Article thirteen, section three, nonconformity of a dimensional client, name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, with the mailing address of one thirty Beach Road, Olaid, Mass. Uh, Madam Chair, the appell, the applicant has combined the three buildings, which are non-conforming structurally to the zoning code, and is proposing to reduce the number of dwelling units from twelve to seven. The new units would range in size, smallest being eight hundred and ten square feet, to the largest being one thousand four hundred and fifteen square feet. Six of the seven units are two bedrooms, one is a single one-bedroom unit. The nonconformity deals with FAR, the code provides for an allowance of two, the existing FAR is three point oh three.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that, um, the only, um, so you're putting a small, uh, tell us about the rear yard extension, because that, and the balconies, please, because it looks like all the rest of the violations may be existing.
Yeah, well, the, eh, the existing L to the rear runs to the property line, that is a dimensional violation. Uh, that L is going to be rehabilitated, it is a two-story structure, and we are proposing to, uh, place a roof deck on that L with a setback of five feet from the property line. The other two proposed decks, uh, rear decks, which will be cantilevered, located at the second and fourth floor, and will project up by feet. Again, it's the L to the rear which creates a non-conforming structure, and therefore, a dimensional violation. The sighted rear yard, uh, is not a violation, this is in a H two sixty-five rowhouse district, uh, we suggest that that, uh, violation is the side yard violation that's not applied to the...
Hold on, let me just ask, was this project before this board in the past?
No.
No, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Um, plans are fine, I, I really have no problem with any of the proposed pieces, I guess, except for the basement units, they...
The bas, oh, sorry, thank you for raising that, so tell us, Moran, our feelings about basement units, you know, tell us about the basement occupancy.
The basement unit has, uh, access to the garden level in the rear, it, that is the one-unit, one-bedroom, uh, unit.
And so how, how basementy, back of the word, is it towards the street?
It is, uh, all of the units were, had base, all the prior units were, had basement units. There are windows on the street level, and the proposed room at the street level is designed to be an office study.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, are you comfortable with that response, Mr. Olick, are you too, um, just having a, a couple of technical issues here, I cannot...
Not, I mean, I'm, I'm honestly, not really, um, the Cedar Street elevation, which is page A six of the package, I think, shows, to me, the challenge of this. Obviously, the street slopes, um, it seems like there's more usable there on the left-hand side. Uh, you know, those are bedrooms on the right-hand side with those little tiny slip windows, um, and they, they obviously gain more height as you move left, but, and then the rear R wells, um, dug into the, um, site, as you can see on the right-hand side, those are underground wells, so, I mean, it is, it's a challenging site, I get, but I think there are some concerns in terms of that, in my opinion, that this board has sort of thought about and talked about before, so, that, those are my only comments on, on the proposal.
So, so, Mr. Moran, just clearly, I mean, uh, clarify for me, this is a gut rehab?
Yes, it is, fully sprinkled, and...
Okay, so, so when, when there's a gut rehab, um, you know, we expect that the applicant will make some, um, some modifications so that there's less of that, um, that occupancy in the basement?
Uh, Madam Chair, it, it does appear, it's a little hard to tell from the various elevations, but it does appear that most of the basement space is underground.
Okay, um, so, um, is anybody here to speak either in...
Madam Chair, if I may, the, this, this basement condition is very common in the back bay, uh, I'm sorry, in Beacon Hill. Uh, and these were existing, uh, basement units when there were twelve units in the three buildings. Uh, the wells do provide access and light, and it's a very common type of, uh, unit in the...
Okay, um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Jacob. Members of the board, this is Maggie from the Office of Neighborhood Services, from what our office understood from the community process, there is some initial controversy, it seems that that has been worked out. Um, the Civic Association is in non-opposition to this project, and we received a few letters of support from the proposal.
So tell us what the controversy was and how it was resolved?
Madam Chair, the controversy in the whole...
I'm, I'm, I'm asking the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, thank you.
I believe that there was an initial proposal for a condo conversion, but they have backtracked on that.
Okay, so it was, okay, got it, but as far as the number of units, did you state the same?
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, um, so, um, anybody else, Mr. Ambassador?
Good morning, Madam Chair, this is Jacob Warner, uh, from the Office of City Councilor, Kenzie Buck, District Eight, wanted to read two, um, points from the Councilor into the record. First is the importance, uh, for the condo conversion law to be upheld, and this building is not, uh, compliant with the condo conversion law, so that we expect it to be apartments that are at the site, the second point being, uh, the Council would like to see the Good Neighbor Agreement with the Beacon Health Civic Association sign, um, uh, as explicitly as possible.
Does the, and does the Counselor, I know this might be kind of putting you on the spot, but does the Counselor have any issues with the basement occupancy?
Uh, the, the Counselor would have the same concerns that were echoed by the residents, as well as the, uh, folks there, bringing them up, she's in, uh, has the same opinion as the people that brought up those concerns.
You?
Madam Chair, I do have one raised hand.
Okay, let's go for it.
Guy, you've, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Grassi, you're the architect for this project, right?
Yes, that's correct, my, my name's Guy Grassi.
Go ahead and clarify whatever statements need to be clarified.
I, I just want to say the, there, there are three basement units proposed, but they're duplexes with the first floor, so the living space, the living level is on the first floor, which gets great light. They're connected to the gardens in the rear, um, so you can walk out a door into the rear garden, so they all have open space. The, there are two bedrooms located in the basement for each of the duplex units. One of the bedrooms has a very large area well, um, and gets good light and view of the garden, even though it is below grade. In the front, um, as pointed out earlier, there are windows to the street, they're small bedrooms, not uncharacteristic to Beacon Hill. Um, and I think they're appropriate for the kinds of uses.
It won't be done for a long ones.
Uh, but they're, just to make it clear, there, there are all three units are, are duplexes with the first floor.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have a few letters of support, unfortunately, I couldn't get on earlier.
Um, I, yes, got it, um, I'm sorry, there's a garbage truck out there, so if you are hearing a disturbance, sorry about that, um, uh, so may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve, but with a proviso that there be no bedrooms, uh, in the basement, since they're duplexes, they can reconfigure the, uh, floor plans to make sure that the bedrooms have adequate light and are above grade.
I'll second that.
Madam Chair, here, unmuted.
Do we need BPTA to review that, so that it is clearly, um, clearly, um, uh, it's followed through on?
Well, it's, uh, it's all interior, but that, we can leave that to Mr. Hampton's, uh, good judgment.
I think that would be on ISD to enforce this proviso and not us.
Okay, got it, so, and you want, and the Beacon Hill, okay, so may I, so the motion is for approval with no bedrooms in the basement, there's a second, uh, Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong? Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, some motion carries. This board will take a fifteen-minute break, it's now eleven o'clock, and will convene at eleven fifteen.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Vote of appeal is back in session. This is a reminder that this is a six-member board today. And for projects to be approved, you need five members in support. Thus, applicants have the ability to request an administrative deferral until such time that there is a full member board. Also a reminder, if you're speaking in support or in opposition to the project, put your name and address on the record. If somebody else has already stated your concerns, make sure that you use your time to give us new information. Otherwise, just put your name and address on the record. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Call the first case for 10:30, sorry. Next case, case BOA 1340939, 48 Waterman Road. This is a gut renovation of existing structure. Reconciles converting the current structure from a one-and-a-half-story tape to a two-and-a-half-story Promontion-style home. Violation of Article 55, Section 12, front yardage insufficient. Article 55, Section 12, side yardage insufficient. And Article 55, Section 40, OCP5 closing. Name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, no one logged in this morning. Let me see if these two... Yamina?
Hello? Hello?
Hi, are you here for 48 Waterman Road? Okay, Yamina, you're having issues with your... With this?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's still a background noise. Can't really make out what you're saying.
Can I use the chat?
Yes, are you here for 48 Waterman Road?
No, I'm here on...
Okay, just let me know on the chat, please.
In the meantime, let's move on to the next address.
Okay.
135212757 Nixon Street. This is a remodel, existing third floor. Violation of Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 65, Section 9, building height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Albert Puma, CSL holder contractor for 57 Nixon Street, Boston.
So tell us what's being proposed.
Good morning. So what we are doing, this is an existing two-family house. It will remain the same use structure. What we are doing is remodeling an existing finished third floor. There's already an existing bathroom and bedrooms up there. What we are doing is adding an additional bathroom, okay? And taking the... And taking this big living room space, what's currently, you know, the master bedroom on the proposed plan, and making that family room, master bedroom, separating this one big open space into a master bedroom and a family room. And then dormer off, as you can see on the bottom of the plan, dormer that so that it's... So that, you know, we can actually stand in there.
So let me just ask you, how many bedrooms will unit two have then?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So currently, I believe there are three bedrooms there, so this would be a fourth bedroom. Because unit two is a second and there is a second and a third floor.
So it'll be changing from a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom?
From a three to a four, sorry.
Three to a four, okay?
Yep.
And tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height?
Yeah, so currently, the, you know, the... Yeah, thank you for pulling that up. So you can see there's already existing, you know, dormers and varying pitches on the existing house. All we're doing there is we're not going any taller than the ceilings that are currently there. So what the dormer would allow for...
So for me, for me, I'm just looking at it. I'm not, I'm not a designer by any means. But I'm looking at it and it's kind of a mishmash of things going on up there. How are you bringing cohesion to it?
Yeah, so what you're seeing right now, of course, are the existing dormers that have been there for, you know, probably as old as the house. So when, you know, when this was designed, they, you know, they kept that aesthetic of the neighborhood and of the house in mind as well. Granted, this is going to be a larger dormer than, as you can see, the other ones are. You know, but it will be... But it will be offering, you know, similar heights in terms of the dormers. The only difference is that this is slightly longer and it's going to be a shed-style roof versus the gabled dormers that you're seeing there.
And it's proposed to continue to be a two-family?
Correct, yes. And, yeah, the same owners will live there. Currently, the owner is Israel Marreros, a Boston police officer who lives there with his family. And his mother-in-law lives on the first floor, so it will remain a family home.
Okay.
It currently is.
Hold on one, hold on one minute. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no real questions. It look, it's a little hard to read, but it looks like it's seven foot nine clear, so I think it should be plenty.
Should be, okay.
I think we're, no questions from them.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a Butters meeting on July 20th. The Butters were in support, as was the St. Mark's Area Civic Association. So at this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we just had one letter of support from St. Mark's. Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, Councilor, Record and Support.
Madam Chair, I have three raised hands.
Let's, let's, let's go through them.
Joanna, you've been unmuted. If you could state your name and address for the record, please? Joanna?
Sorry about that. I'm waiting to raise my hand. You can, you can mute me. I raised it accidentally. I'm not...
Okay, 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 no problem. Thank you. Sergio, Sergio, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please?
And I'd like to hear from the Butters on these coming projects. So if you're not in a Butter, please put down your hand.
I'm sorry, I was waiting for 48 Waterman.
It's on. Put your name and address on the record and tell us if you're in support or opposition. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. And what is your name?
Sergio Medrano, I live at 57...
Sergio, are you the owner of, I'm the applicant on Waterman?
No, I live right...
Okay, so put your hand down, please. Mr. Ambassador, anybody else?
Izzy, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Kunden, over the last two years.
Izzy, we can't hear you. The service.
Okay.
Yamina?
No.
Yamina?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm not on here for this project.
I'm sorry, are you ready for me, Izzy, or no?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Izzy Marrero, owner of 57 Nixon Street. I just asked...
I assume that you're in support of your own project?
Absolutely. I'm just here to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, on this project?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support. Motion is approved for approval with design review. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 135 3559, 4166 to 4168 A Washington Street. This is a change of art from a dry cleaner to a smoothie shop. Violation of Article 67, Section 8, used condition, state-built restaurant. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rosemary Valles. I'm here with V. Healthy Nutrition for 4166 Washington Street. And we are thinking a change of occupancy from dry cleaners to smoothie shop.
Okay, are you, you're just here, from what I can tell, just for the change of use? You're not here for takeout?
Correct.
Correct, so, okay. So just tell us this, this, tell us quickly what your hours of operation are.
So we're currently not open yet. This is what we propose it to look like. Right now, it's, it's empty.
Okay.
We're going to be open from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And then 8:00 to 3:00 on Saturdays, and we're closed on Sunday.
Okay, though, I think, actually, what is the, it is, it is for takeout, okay? Because the, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson? Is it handicapped accessible?
Looks, appears to be no real questions. I guess my only question, is there any exterior changes that you're going to do? I assume you have signage, but anything to the building itself or no?
No changes to the building.
Okay, no questions from me, thank you.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Udo Inochi. We held a meeting for this project on 7/27. About six people attended. They were pretty happy about this project, especially because it was owned by a person of color. They have contacted the closest neighborhood association. And we, my office has not received any letters in support or opposition of the project. And we'll be deferring judgment to the board.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have a few letters of support. Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, Councilor, Record and Support.
Mr. Ambassador, are we all good?
All good, no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Motion, please?
Motion approved with usual takeout provisos.
And this petition only?
Petition only, yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 135 9936, 175 Woodworth Street. They have parking, existing three-family house. Looking for a curb cut with three parking spots. Violation of Article 53, Section 9, parking, dimensional regulation, parking required, front yard is not allowed. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking, closing, time for maneuvering. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small. Business address of 51 Austin Road. Madam Chair, we are here today seeking relief to legalize the three off-street parking spots that already exist at the current location. The zoning sub-district carries 4,000, a lot size of 6,290 square feet. The parking is in the rear of the building itself, as the building fronts on Woodworth Street. And the curb, the existing curb cut comes off of Calhoun Street. So we're looking to create three parking spaces in the rear of the building.
Okay. Has this project been before this board in the past?
Yes, Madam Chair. This project was before the board earlier this year, February. And that was to erect a three-family dwelling, which we did. Come to find out, parking was already existing. Come to find out after the fact that the parking that existed wasn't, was never legalized. And so ISD had us come back under a used premises permit application to legalize the parking.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board? I mean, sorry, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Well, so I guess I, is Mr. D'Amico on? I know the...
Yeah, Mr. D'Amico is on, I believe. Okay, because, I mean, the alignment of the curb cut doesn't appear to align with the parking in the photos.
So I think there's a way to work around this because the BPDA has also recommended denial without prejudice. But there might be a way to, to work it through motions and through provisos. But go ahead, Mr. D'Amico, what is your thought?
Madam Chair, ladies, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BCD. There are no parking designs on the plan, so I don't know how the cars are going to be parked. And from what I can see, I think three cars might be a little bit difficult for maneuverability. And like previously stated, the curb cut is not even close to being where the vehicles would enter. So there's a lot of work here. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I see how it works. I think we can just make some provisos.
Yep. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. Our office held a Butters meeting on May 25th. Direct Butters were in favor of legalizing the existing parking. No concerns were raised by residents. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands.
Let's, let's go, please.
Bob, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please?
That was Mr. D'Amico.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
We get to CJ?
Yes, CJ. CJ, hi, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please?
496 Bennington Street, East Boston. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the zoning board. I think this is a case where you, they have put the car before the horse. It was brought up at the Harborview meeting that these, these units are, they are occupied. This would set a very serious precedent if, if the parking is allowed to be put in here. This would mean that any existing curb cut in the city of Boston would allow any homeowner to go in there and just lay down asphalt and make it parking without going through the proper...
Let me just ask you, so are you contending that in fact, this is not the existing parking that was on this site?
Well, the gentlemen that just testified basically stated they did not go through the proper procedure to apply for parking. So what I'm saying...
Okay, thank you, because my understanding is that this parking was there before, but... Okay, so in the meantime, let's go ahead. And thank you for your comment, Mr. CJ. Okay, so we have all that on the record. May I have, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review for where the curb cut should be and the amount of spots that can fit back there.
So we are talking, we are talking...
Can we add screening and buffering to that?
Okay, so hold on. So we are looking at approval with design review, for BPDA design review, so that the curb cut is centered with the paved area. I'm just trying to take their denial and make it positive? Okay, with centered, centered with paved area and, and screening and buffering?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo's also in support. Some motion carries with design review and screening and buffering. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the board, have a good day.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 136 1985, 108 to 108E, Austin Street. This is the wreck of six new townhomes. Violation is Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking insufficient. Article 51, Section 8, forbidden use in a 2F 5,000 sub-district. Article 51, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 51, Section 9, the front yard is sufficient. Article 51, Section 9, side yard is sufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the rear yard is sufficient. And Article 51, Section 9.4, dimensional regulations, main address, name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy, with the business address of 168 8th Street, first floor, South Boston. With me today from the development team is Brian McGrath, and as well as Alida from Chuen Associates, who is the architect. So the current site consists of existing, illitigated, three-family in a garage in the rear of the lot. The proposal here is to erect a new three-story building with six ownership townhomes, with one off-street parking per unit utilizing an existing curb cut in driveway on a $9,000 square foot lot.
So Counselor?
Yes.
Have you seen the BPDA's recommendation?
I have not, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's, it's recommending denial without prejudice. And because it's our, it's our city's planning agencies, it does state that the proposal is excessive in height and density. And the proponent should consider a proposal that complies with the height and density requirements of the zoning code. Okay, so you should, and added, further states that the site plans should pay special attention to the surrounding context. There is also a six-member board today, and you need five members in support. So given all those clues, I would suggest that you reconsider your next steps.
Okay, so definitely knowing that there's a six-member board, we will reserve our right to an administrative deferral. But also, I'd like to note in respect to the BPDA stance on the height, we are compliant under height, but excessive in the stories portion of it, seeking three.
Got it, because if this is a 2F 5,000, so it's two-and-a-half stories, but you should, and your applicant should have looked at it contextually. Okay, may I have a motion for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson? Arajo?
Aye, Robinson is aye, sorry.
Got it, got it. So the motion for deferral carries the date, please?
Of the date of November 1st at 11:30.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, good luck. In the meantime, so we have one more?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm going to go back to Waterman Road. Case BOA 1340939, 48 Waterman Road, are you on? Madam Chair, it is now 11:38. I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second? Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo's also aye, so motion carries for denial without prejudice.
Madam Chair, it's now 11:38. I'm going to call the 11:30 rediscussions for any deferrals and withdrawals. This is for the 11:30 rediscussion, any deferrals or withdrawals, give me the address first.
I agree, great.
For the record, calling BOA 121 53... For the record, calling BOA one-two-one-five-three-two-eight-five-Greed Street. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street. We are seeking administrative deferral for a full board, uh, at a hearing. Thank you.
We have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, the date, please?
Yeah, November first at eleven-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the eleven-thirty rediscussions?
Mr. Secretary, eighty-two Webster Street.
Counselor, for the record, calling BOA one-three-two-seven-seven-five-three-eighty-two Webster Street. Name and address for the record.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz, two-forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. Mr. Secretary, we are requesting withdrawal.
Motion to defer.
Denied without prejudice.
I'll make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support of the motion carries for denial without prejudice.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the eleven-thirty?
One-twenty-six Layden Street, Mr. Secretary.
About one-twenty-four as well?
Yes, please.
For the record, calling BOA one-three-zero-three-three-nine-seven-one-twenty-four Layden Street. There's also a continued case, BOA one-three-zero-three-six-five-one, one-twenty-six Layden Street. Name and address for the record.
Again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lenz, two-forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of petitioner, requesting administrative deferral for full board.
You have another-
Motion to deny without prejudice. Oh my, I'm not-
You're switching cases here, isn't it? Second?
I follow.
Okay, uh, Fortune?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
I'm recusing.
Oh, okay, well, that's a good thing then, um, Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also, uh, so motion for deferral carries the date, please?
Uh, we're gonna have a date of November first at eleven-thirty.
Thank you, is that a full board? Are we aware if that's a full board?
It, it should be, Counselor. As it stands right now, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the eleven-thirty rediscussions? If there are none, I'll go to the ten-thirty cases. Calling BOA one-two-seven-two-four-nine-four-two-fifty-four to two-fifty-six Bennington Street. This is a first-floor occupancy will remain at forty-nine, include thirty-eight seats. Increase arc, increase the occupant load on the second floor. Second floor function will be open. Eighty-one total, thirty-four standing and forty-seven seats. Four options, two, one-hundred-and-ninety-four, over one-hundred-and-fourteen standing with five seats. A violation of Article nine, section one, extension of an unconforming unit. Name and address for the record. Is there anybody on for two-fifty-four, two-fifty-six Bennington Street? I will come back to that one. Calling a next case? Somebody here for-
Yes, I'm here.
For the record, please.
Yeah, Michael Laurias, I'm, I'm here for, uh, two-fifty-four, two-fifty-six Bennington Street, Cabana LV Inc.
Put your name and address on the record and tell us what's being proposed.
Yes, Michael Laurias, I'm at the Powerhouse Building at the Schraft Center, five-twenty-nine Main Street, Suite P two-hundred, Charleston, Massachusetts. I'm proposing here that a increased capacity for the second floor, that this restaurant currently is a, a restaurant that serves the residents of East Boston, it serves the Latin community well, um, it does family functions, uh, it wants to do family functions-
Now, let me ask you, what is the name of the restaurant, first and foremost? We need that on the record.
The restaurant's name is Cabana Grill.
Okay, and so they are looking to increase, to extend, um, occupancy to the second floor, um, and, um, let's just find out, and so there's lots of options here, but we understand that the first floor will remain at forty-nine. Tell us, in the meantime, have they reached a decision on what the second floor is going to be?
At this time, I think both options are available.
Well, um, okay, because my, my question then becomes, um, we need to know kind of what we're approving, um, so that we can, um, so we can hold you to it if your occupancy changes or anything happens.
I was appearing today with, uh, Attorney Gene Charney, I think he was, he was also on the Zoom.
And, and just a quick question, are you, uh, proposing any music or anything up there?
Um, I, I was, I was today appearing with Attorney Charney, I believe he's waiting on, on the Zoom right now, um. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, put your name and address on the record and let's get moving on this.
Okay, my, my name's Gene Charney, um, my business address is six-seventy-five BFW Parkway, Chestnut Hill. I say I'm former counsel because this is the thirteenth day of my retirement from the practice of law, so Michael Laurias is successor counsel. The, there, the second floor-
Well, let's just thank congratulations to you. And just, so, and, and I guess good retire, good, uh, lawyers never retire, so tell us about that second floor occupancy. We just wanna know if there's gonna be a disturbance noise-wise to any of the abudders or if there is, uh, protections in place for that.
Well, th, this is a standalone building, the owners of the, the Cabana Grill, the restaurant, own the building. The second floor is to be for functions. The difference is, some functions may want seating at tables, so that is why the, the initial, the first option of eighty-one people, thirty, uh, was seated. The second is, if people just wanna have a flow, there is no plans at all for anything of a nightclub nature, uh, so there won't be loud raucous parties of that nature. Again, the intent, the, the feedback that the, the owners have gotten from the residents of the community have said that they wanna have their wedding anniversaries there, grandma's eightieth party, excuse me for my mispronunciation, but Quintonara Ana parties, which is sort of like a Latin sweet sixteen party. They may-
Okay, so, so Counsel, hold on a second, okay? How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are fine, I, I mean, I guess, assuming, I mean, it's tied to occupancy issues, so it seems like we should be really thinking about the higher occupancy, which is the standing room option at one-fourteen.
Right, yeah, it was-
I don't, I don't have any issue with that as it's proposed, it has an elevator, it's, you know, it's fine, I don't see any-
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, uh, hours of operation for the functions?
Well, the hours of the functions would probably not go any later than eleven o'clock based upon the current hours of the operation of the restaurant. One other thing that I, I do think is important, that the functions would be, have to have food, they would not be just an open bar, because the, the, uh, underlying liquor license is a food with beverage. So in terms of whether this is gonna be a party room, yes, it's gonna be a party room, but more of a family party room. It's not gonna be somebody saying, hey, let's go up there and have a, a, a dance drinking party, that's not what it is intended to do.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, what's the second floor currently used for?
Well, right now, it's nothing, there's, there's, there's nothing, it's, it's been rehabbed and brought up to code, the, as you can see, the plans. Uh, the problem was that I had initially filed for alteration permit, which included the, uh, occupancy change. The ISD came back and they wanted some information from the contractor, and then the contractor fired their, filed their own alteration, uh, request without the occupancy, hence, that's why we're here. We may have been here, had the contractor included it, that remains to be seen, but we're here now because they're not using it at all. At one time, prior to their use, I believe previous owners were using it as, uh, like a nightclub issue type thing, and that caused concern.
Okay, we, we understand, so question-
The reason I'm asking, Madam, Madam Chair, is I'm looking at the, the Google, the building is not that big, and I'm thinking a hundred-and-nineteen people is a, a concerned number of people, I mean, I assume the fire department would have their own issues about the limits on the, the occupancy, but, um, that seems like a lot of people in a relatively small space.
Well, if I may address that, um, the architect who designed this, and I don't have his name off the top of the head, does do restaurant designs and did do the occupancy according to standards of the building code and code, so those, uh, requested occupancies are within. Now, again, if, if the fire department comes in and says something differently, that, that would certainly change the issue, but my understanding is, is that as it stands now, those requested occupancies are within legal bounds.
Is that, is that your, is that your understanding, Mr. Robinson?
So it is calculated at five square feet per person, which is a standard for assembly of standing room, so that's what that max is. If that's the hatched area on the plan, um, it's people standing, usually you calculate at five square feet, and the area is calculated at one-four, one-hundred-and-fourteen people, so, I mean, the egress capacity should be adequate, adequate in terms of its, and the, the separation, but you're right, it's a BFD question, but, um-
Mr. Robinson, secretary here, is the building fully sprinkled?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
So that's ninety-nine or more that you'd have to sprinkle?
Yep.
And, and, and the last question, it does have handicapped access, it does have an elevator?
It does.
Okay, good, okay, let's move on. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition? Miss Ambassador, uh, the two raised hands so far, uh, Gene Charmy, Charney and Michael are both, uh, here on behalf of the applicant.
Correct, there are no, no other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. Our office conducting abudders meeting on March twenty-ninth. Seven abudders joined the meeting, uh, and expressed their support for this proposal. Um, they were excited about more community space, uh, for the Latino community, uh, to have such events such as, uh, consigueras. Uh, no concerns were raised at the meeting, although there was an abutter who reached out afterwards to express concerns regarding parking. Uh, the project also presented to the Eagle Hill Civic Association twice in March and in June. Uh, members had expressed concerns regarding security for busy nights when restaurants were expecting overflow. They also expressed that they did not want to have this turned into a nightclub, which the applicant referenced. Um, ultimately, they ended up supporting, um, eleven members in favor and three opposed. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Any, anybody from, uh, City Counselor's office? Okay, uh, may I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with the following proviso, um, that functions end by eleven PM and that they come back in two years, um, to give us an update about how things go, two years from occupancy.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support. Uh, Counsel, just make sure that your successful, successful counsel knows about this, um, this, uh, two years and that we, we see the project in that time. So motion carries, good luck.
Yes, thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-three-three-four-three-eight-seven, twenty-five Athelmann Street. This is a new build construction of a two-family townhome. Violation Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor area ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, good day. My name is Charles Robson, uh, my address is two-five-three Reservation Road. Good day, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, my colleague, Jonah Manigot, is the architect on record for this project, and we're proposing a two-family, uh, new construction project. We would like to, uh, go over some of the proposed requirements. Um, Jonah, would you take it from the-
So, so please, um, um, Mr. Green, tell us about, um, first, tell us what page we should be looking at so we understand how the project works, um, and the square footage and what the, uh, what we should be looking at for, um, um, design, what, what page we should be looking at for design?
I'd like to defer to the architect to follow through with that process, if that's okay with you, Madam?
Yes, please, whoever the architect is, put your name and address on the record.
Madam Chair, this is Tom, he's rejoining as an attendee because he's chairing a series of meetings.
In the meantime, Mr. Robinson, how is, how are the plans?
I think the plans are good, I think the, um, proposal fits contextually, I think it needs some work on the site plan, it's showing two curb cuts and parking in the front yard on both sides, um, but I think that, other than that, I have no questions except for specifically the site plan, so.
Okay, got it, okay. Any occupancy in the basement?
Doesn't appear so.
Okay, and the only, the, so the two violations are the lot a, area insufficiency and the FAR ex, ex, excess. Okay, is the, is the architect on? If you're on, please put your name and address on the record.
Jonah Manigot, thirty-six Pumfle Street, Boston, Mass., two-one-zero-eight.
Okay, so please tell us, um, what page we should be looking at to understand how this project works, and, uh, you may have heard, uh, a concern about the two curb cuts and that there is in both cases, because this is a corner lot, considered front yard parking.
Yes, actually, uh, I'm glad you brought that up, during the committee meetings, we've had conversations with, uh, with, uh, the community, and they actually, uh, want us to actually have one curb cut, so I think, uh, this is probably gonna go to the BPDA review, so I think in the final version of this, we will, I think we will end up with just one curb cut that will have side-by-side parking for the two units.
Okay, and, um, what page should we look at to see what this project will look like?
So, uh, I think, uh, if, if somebody's calling very, oh yeah, I mean, you're looking at the elevation now, I mean, uh, this is, this is the front elevation, uh, and I think-
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I think it was, this one, one elevation will be for the, after Wall Street, and the, the other front elevation will be on Spencer Street. It's a corner lot, so we're taking advantage of the corner lot to allow each, uh, uh, unit to have their own front entrance, so it'll be a little, feel a little bit independent from each other, so one person will enter on Afterwall, the other person will enter on Spencer Street, they all have their own private entrances. It's a two-bedroom unit, uh, building, around fourteen-hundred square feet total, uh, we would not provide, we would not propose anything in the basement, we, uh, it's, it's two, uh, it's living space on the, on the ground floor, uh-
Thank you, thank you.
I'm going to-
Okay, thank you for being so, thank you for being so quick. Um, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. Our office held an abudders meeting on June twenty-ninth, where the applicant worked closely with the Director Abudders and the Association around density concerns, um, as well as addressing parking and the request to cede homeownership. Uh, they have support from the community as well as the WOW Association.
Mr. Ambassador, are we good?
All good, no raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review, specifically looking at the site plan and the curb cuts to reduce it to a single curb cut.
And no, and no front yard parking.
And no front yard parking, thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, so motion for approval with design review, uh, carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-three-three-eight-six-three-one, five-thirty-nine-to-five-fifty-three East Broadway. This is a change of occupancy, takeout restaurant phase one, fit out for commercial kitchen and celery space, vestibule, approximately nine hundred square feet. A violation of Article sixty-eight, section seven, takeout restaurant, name and address for the record, please.
Hey.
Hey.
Is the applicant here for East Broad, for East Broadway?
Hi, Anna, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, put your name and address on the record and tell us what's being proposed.
John Tony, five forty-three East Broadway. We're looking to take a former takeout coffee shop that my parents ran for thirty years and invest the money to make it more of a kitchen for takeout. With the COVID, we were unable to transition properly, and we're looking to invest some money to make more full options along with the coffee and food.
So if you're proposing takeout, what's the name of the, of the, of the business?
It will continue to be known as the Java House.
Sorry, the dropout?
The Java House.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. And is it handicapped accessible?
Yes, it is.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions on what they're proposing.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS held in a butters meeting for five thirty-nine, five fifty-three East Broadway on July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. For the most part, abutters enthusiastically expressed their support. There are a few questions about ventilation and trash removal. The Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association is in support of this proposal. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office, the counselor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council at five, Michael Clarity. Although his opinion as to Article sixty-eight has been consistent, there are potential projects that do have merit. This is a project that would allow the Java House to, at a kitchen, serve, serve more food and to allow the, they're bowling out that they, they own next to it, if it remained viable within the South Boston community. There've been good, good community members, therefore the council would leave it to the board's discretion.
Madam Chair, secretary, we do have a few letters of support.
Um, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve with, for this petition or only, and the usual takeout provisos.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo's also in support, motion carries, good luck with the approval and provisos.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one three four 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 five nine, twelve Basto Terrace. This is the demo roof and the rear elevation, front elevation roof, paying no foundation work, frame of full-length dormer of the rear elevation and renovation, existing bathroom and a bedroom in the attic. Violation Article sixty-seven, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article sixty-seven, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Amanda here for, for popular construction, Brady Basington here for, to talk on this.
So please tell us what's being proposed, is, first tell us what, is this a one or a two-family, and then take us, talk us through what this is proposed to be.
I'm sorry, Brady Basington has his hand raised, he wasn't able to get in as a panelist.
Yeah, he's been elevated to a panelist.
Okay.
Come on, let's go ahead.
Brady, are you on?
It doesn't seem that he's getting that, could he just be given permission to?
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Brady. Yeah, I just, Brady?
In the meantime, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are good, it's fairly straightforward, I mean, it's adding a minimal mass per foot to the attic on a dormer, I think it's.
Is this a single family or a two-family?
It appears to be a two-family, I think there's two units in the building.
There are two units, that's correct, sorry.
And any occupancy in the basement?
There's no drawings for the basement, because the drawings are specific only to the attic, so I can't get to that.
The basement is, the basement is not occupied, the, the first, there's one unit on the first floor, and then the second, and proposed third floor would be the second.
And what's the proposed size of that second unit, and how many bedrooms?
There would be three total bedrooms, there are three total bedrooms now, there would be four bedrooms. The total square footage of, currently, right now, the proposed square footage would be four thousand six hundred and twenty-one square feet.
And what's the proposed size of the addition?
It's not, it's already existing, we're, we're proposing to add a dormer, which would increase the square footage by about three hundred square feet.
Okay, three hundred square foot addition. Any questions from the board, because I checked with Mr. Robinson, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support, support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ujra Nochi, and I'm the mayor's liaison to the neighborhood of Rosendale. We held a meeting for twelve Basto Terrace at seven eighteen, August eighteenth. Neighbors seem to be generally in support of this project, they were in contact with the closest neighborhood association, and I believe we received three letters of support. And at this moment, we would like to.
What's the, sorry, what is the neighborhood association there?
Lana.
You know, I was speaking with a board member at Lana, their, their boundaries go up Belgrade.
Yes, but we have, my office has them reach out to the closest one, so that was the closest to them.
Yeah, yeah, they, they're surprised at that, but anyway, let's see, anybody else with a raised hand?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jordan Frey is here from Councilor Ricardo Royal's office, would like to go on record in support of this, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ambassador, are we all set?
All set.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we need design review, Mr. Hampton?
Not if Mr. Robinson doesn't think so.
I'm good, I think it's fine.
All right.
Okay, is there?
Second.
Second, Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo's also in support, so motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, appreciate it.
Calling a next two cases, calling BOA one three five two four nine five, four twenty to four thirty-eight Rutherford Avenue. There's a companion case, BOA one three five two five zero eight, four forty to four fifty-eight Rutherford Avenue, this is four twenty, four thirty-eight. This is new construction of a three-story steel structure with common roof deck, building nine includes nine thousand, ninety-nine thousand five hundred square feet of office research and development, with accessories, small storage, flammable liquids, gases, corndshell. Violation Article sixty-two, section seventeen, research laboratory is conditional use. Article sixty-two, section seventeen, product development, prototype development is conditional, and Article sixty-two, section eighteen, the builder height, dimensional regulation. This is four four forty, four fifty-eight Rutherford. This is ancillary parking, four twenty Rutherford Avenue. Violation Article sixty-two, section seventeen, parking lot is conditional, and Article sixty-two, section seventeen, ancillary parking is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Jay Igerman, Ruben Junius and Rose, one twelve Water Street in Boston. With me also is the team to answer questions, Architect Alan Yanni. Before I get started, there was an error in the mailed notice that I want to address that flagged accessory toxic waste handling, and that was not, that's not proposed at the site. As you heard, there is accessory storage of flammables. By right, you could do up to thirty thousand gallons, but inside, we're doing a five thousand gallon storage for the emergency generator.
So I suppose that was cited as one kitten caboodle, so it's, okay, got it. So tell us, begin by telling us what the zoning district is, and what the size of the lot is at four twenty to four thirty-eight Rutherford.
Yes, if we go to the next slide, please? The existing lot is fifty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-five feet, so it's, you'll see it at the right-hand side there, it's right now a self-storage building, four twenty Rutherford, and the existing building is about forty thousand square feet on that over-acre lot. Next slide, please. This is a local industrial sub-district in Charlestown, so it's the new, new Rutherford Local Industrial. And in fact, the intersecting street is called Bunker Hill Industrial Park, that's the name of the street. You'll see, that's the existing building shown, to the right is a condo, residential condo, that is part of the Hood Park PDA. Everything to the north of us is part of that planned development area. Next slide, please. Proposed building, we'll raise the self-storage ninety-nine thousand five hundred, the FAR is one point eight, which is by right, you could go up to two, but we have a big site, we don't need that. The height, however, is limited to forty-five feet, and we're doing forty-eight feet to the cornice line, and then there's a twenty-foot foot mechanical penthouse, and the roof coverage will be limited to one-third, however, there's a provision in Charlestown of ten percent, so we need zoning relief to go to the thirty-three and a third. As you heard, there's ancillary parking, I'll show in the next slide, of fifty spaces for the building. Next slide, please. So this is a site plan, the owner, Related Beal, also owns four hundred and forty Rutherford, and that parking area in the back, shown in blue, are the fifty parking spaces that will be dedicated to the proposed laboratory building, and the remaining sixty-eight will be used by four forty Rutherford. Next slide, please. This shows the roof condition, this was an important aspect, working with the BPDA and the neighbors to the north, in order to minimize the impact on their views. So you'll see in the lower right-hand corner, there's a green space in the northeasterly corner, in order to shape this thing so that it's, it's acceptable to the neighbors. Next slide, please.
Is this bill, bill, being built on spec, or do you have a tenant in place?
Spec, it's a spec building, ma'am.
Okay, because I'm just trying to figure out, so when I think about product development prototype, I would be concerned about the emissions, and so can you respond to that?
Yes, and we have a co-consultant with us, David Vitale, who can give more detail. This is all going to meet state and local regulations on air control, air quality control. The kind of users will be limited, there are four gradations of laboratory space, one through four, under the CDC. This will be limited to BSL two, it will be no higher than two. And in fact, so mostly working with cells under microscope. And if you need more detail on the kind of regulations that are put in by the state and the local, David could answer that question.
No, I think, I think we do have an understanding of that, so it's BSL two, which is good. And did you, and tell us about the residential abutters?
Yes, we can go to the, maybe the next slide. So the residential abutters are to the northeast, you'll see an alleyway known as Half-Pint Way. So those residential abutters are part of the Hood Park PDA, where also laboratory is allowed and exists. It's by right in the PDA, whereas in the local industrial district, you need a conditional use permit. The height of that building, maybe go to the next slide, this one isn't that helpful, is about eighty-three feet to its highest point, and about seventy-five feet to its cornice. The highest point of our building is seventy-one, and that's deliberate, we wanted it to be a little bit lower. And this slide shows there will be improvements, we worked with the BPDA and BTD, they have a comprehensive plan to upgrade Rutherford Avenue. We'll do our part in front, and there's also some additional cash actions they need for other locations on the avenue.
Is there a lead level for industrial buildings?
Yes, we're targeted gold.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are, are good, I, I think they've done a nice job trying to knit this sized building in adjacent to the residential, and I think the streetscape, as you see on the screen, I think is, is, will be nice, so no real questions on the proposed project, I think it's in quite nicely.
Any questions from the board? And this is not in a flood zone?
No, it's actually not, this was upland historically, but it is in the coastal resilience, so it will comply with the coastal resilience to be elevated.
Okay, and what does that mean specifically for a lab?
For a lab, there will be no, no chemicals allowed below, I believe, twenty-one feet Boston city base, so it has to be elevated up in case there's a flood event, but also there's a containment. Boston Fire Department and other departments make sure that if there's a spill, say, of those flammable, of the fuel for the generator, that it's contained in the building, it can't get out.
So all those, all those, all the mechanical stuff would be above twenty-one feet, so it could still be functional?
That's right, and I think, I think I misspoke, I think it's actually two feet above twenty-one, that's the, about nineteen, I'm sorry.
Twenty-three feet, okay, got it. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, at this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board, as you heard from the applicant, majority of the abutters within three hundred feet are primarily industrial. At this time, our office is unaware of any neighborhood concerns. Thank you.
I have a concern, and I'm on as the public.
Hold on, please, the ambassador will get back, will get to you, okay?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office, the counselor would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have one letter of support, we do have two letters of opposition, one was about trees, and the other was about the toxic, but I think Mr. Igerman explained that.
Okay, Mr. Ambassador, go ahead.
Mark? Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Rosenchine, I'm a twenty-year Charlestown resident, and also work at the Hood Park Plant and assisting them with their real estate development. Just wanted to speak in support of the project, we are the immediate director of butter north, and as was noted in the presentation, the Harvey, which is our residential building, immediately abuts the project. We've had extensive working conversations with the folks at Related, they've done a really good job of keeping us up to speed on the project and the design, discussed the residential, they came and met with all of the residents from the Harvey, and gave them a lot of information about the construction process. We're aware of the mitigation measures, including the laundromat, which is very important to Charlestown, and so just wanted to speak in support both of the project and the process that the Related folks went to as their direct butter. Thank you for your time.
Lana?
Thank you, I have a few questions, the first is for Jason Renterer.
Sorry, Ms. Heinz, will you put your name and, and address on the record?
And at this point, we, we know verbally, because this is being also, so, so put your
name and address on the record, and this is not a time for cross, cross-examining, so this.
No, I just have a few questions.
I just, I just, I just want you to state if you're in support, if you're in opposition, and what your issues are, okay?
Sure, no problem, my name's Joanna Heinz, I live on High Street in Charlestown. I'm also on the neighborhood council, though I don't speak for the whole council, I speak for myself and many of my constituents. I have a, I'm concerned about the term local industrial district, because the neighborhood is in the process of something called Plan Charlestown, and I'm curious as to when that industrial district status was approved. I also drove by today after looking at a satellite image of the property from, I guess, a year ago, and it seems that there have been a handful of mature trees taken down, and I'm curi, I'm wondering when that happened, if there was a public process around that. I'm also concerned about the fact that there has been no land study done for this project. It turns out that all of Rutherford Ave sits on top of the Middle Sex Canal, which is listed as a national historic piece of land on the National Register of Historic Places, so I think it's really important that land study be done, so that the developer doesn't get caught up when it, when it is a big deal, because it's gonna be. And then the green space, you know, the pictures, it's just so important as far as like gaining trust and buy-in from the community, that there's like, you know, that, that, the pictures speak for the truth, and the pictures that you just showed, show mature trees along the edge that from my eye are at least. that, from my eye, are at least sixteen diameter or higher. And I have not heard anything about planting sixteen-inch diameter trees along that edge. So I think there needs to be some clarity and some, you know, honesty about what the plan is for those trees. Because I don't believe, and I haven't heard anything about mature trees being transplanted along that edge. There's also a lot of open space surrounding the building. No, this is my last concern.
Okay.
Is there a limit on concerns? I mean, I'm the only person here. I've been on the phone for three and a half hours. I think as a public process, we should be given a chance to speak.
No, I got it, but this has been through an Article eighty process?
I know, and I'm bringing up things that are now coming up because there have been steps skipped. And I think on the record, and I'm glad this is recorded, that needs to be made clear. And I just want you to know that a lot of people tend to talk about it.
Sorry.
And then my other question is, how does the developer know that this is gonna be cells under microscope if there's no tenant in place? And what is the guarantee that that is the sort of tenant that will be in place? I thought you asked some good questions about that, Madam Chair, and I'm following up about the tenant in place. Because that's also something that came up at every public meeting I was at. So there is a lot of opposition to this. And I think it's important that we hear the letter and not just be told that there was a letter by the BPDA. Thanks.
Okay, so councillor, can you please respond?
Sure, sure. I'll address as many of the points as I can within time.
Yep.
We don't have a tenant, but because it's limited to BSL two, as I say, there are these four gradations. Typically, when you only go up to Bioscience Level Two, it's cells under microscopes, in short. Can't guarantee that, but it could not be more meters.
Let me just ask you, because we've seen this in other places in the city. But, you know, this also opens you up to do other things, like robotics or something else.
That's right, that's right. It could. Yeah, so the use designation, to use vernacular, it could be a dry lab, or it could be a wet lab. The cells under microscopes, shorthand I'm using, would be the wet lab. But this approval, this conditional use, would allow things that have nothing to do with biology, too. It could be robotics, or mechanical, or computers, that's true. On the landscape plan, I don't think the specimen trees will be brought in. They'll be planted and they'll grow. But I want to emphasize, we worked very closely with BTD and BPDA on their Charlestown plan. So everything that's proposed on that sidewalk was worked out with city officials, and we're taking our direction from them. Another concern, I think, was the Middlesex Canal. That was analyzed, we're aware that historically, the Middlesex Canal was in this vicinity. And through the PNF, the Article eighty process, we did have historians and preservation architects analyze that with the city. So I don't think there was a concern. And remember, there's an existing building there now. So the site has been disturbed historically.
But the open space is not, and you're picking up more.
This is not a conversation. Ms. Ambassador, can you mute everybody but the board and the person who's speaking? Thank you. So let me just get clarity. So the Middlesex Canal, has that been filled in? Or could it be at some point vulnerable to a collapse or something like that?
I don't, nothing was identified like that. Again, and the building here is not a skyscraper. It's not high-rise construction. But it was filled in historically. So there's difficult to find trace of it now. But yes, that was analyzed. And of course, soil engineering is going to be crucial for any building permit. So we don't have a concern there. On open space, I want to emphasize again, this building is replacing an existing building. And the parking area in the back, behind 440, is gonna remain a parking area. And in fact, in working with the BPDA, our Plan Charlestown, they wanted to open up that Half-Pint Way alleyway. So that will remain an alleyway going north-south. Theoretically, it could, with PIC approval, it could continue into Hood Park. So we're actually not covering more land. Any other questions, Madam Chair?
No, I think that covers everything. And just to clarify, that you're not requesting approval for Article sixty-two, Section seventeen, accessory storage or transfer of toxic waste?
No, ma'am, it's an error.
Which is forbidden use, okay.
It is forbidden.
Okay, so given that, and you're proposing, I'm looking at the two parcels, and you're proposing screening and buffering at 440, 458 Rutherford.
Right, and the parking actually straddles the lot line. So you need a conditional use for ancillary shared parking.
Okay. Okay, so given all that information, may I have a motion? Please.
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second that, Eric.
Hold on, may I also have, as part of the motion, non-approval, not denial of approval of that Article sixty-two, Section seventeen, which is the toxic waste, so that it's just completely taken off from any discussion in the future?
Okay, so that's a two-part motion, then, to oppose the, well, to deny approval of Article sixty-two, Section seventeen issue, and to approve the other requested variances with BPDA design review.
And please, whoever's doing the minutes, make sure that Articles sixty-two, Section seventeen, the one that Mark referred to, is specific to the accessory storage or transfer of toxic waste, and not the product development. Is there a second?
Second, Eric.
Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
And Rajo is also in support. So motion carries on both those addresses and for both those decisions, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 1358847 to Wombach Street. This is a change of occupancy from office to office and six units. Build a new addition, renovate the existing building with new finishes. Violation, Article nine, section one, extension of an unperformed use. Article fifty, section twenty-eight, a six-family use is forbidden. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the addition of lot areas insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the flood area ratio is excessive. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, usable office space is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, front yard is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the rear yard is sufficient. Article fifty, section forty-three, off-street parking and loading insufficient. Seven, six is provided. Article fifty, section forty-three, off-street parking and loading, location, one space located, the front yard of Wombach Street. Name and address, further, Eric, please.
Yes, my name is Dr. Guy Pratt. My address is 454 Lowell Avenue. I am the architect for the project.
So, so Mr. Pratt, yes, can you describe? Can you please describe the project?
Yes.
And tell us what these additions are, and how you are changing the occupancy to include those additional two units?
Yes, first of all, the existing condition as it exists is that the first floor is currently occupied by the owner, who is a contractor. Construction business occupies the entire first floor. The second and third floor is...
Is this Thomas Construction?
Yep, yep, it is.
Oh, got it, so I know the building, okay. Now, how are the two units going to be worked in there?
Yes, first of all, what's happening is that the first floor, it's existing, which has business, it occupies the entire first floor. That's gonna be relocated to the, you know, sorry, Frank is calling me now. Frank, I'm on Zoom. Anyway, so the basement level, Frank's business is gonna be relocated from the first floor to the basement. And it's gonna be substantially reduced to about nine hundred square feet. The additional space in the basement is gonna be used for office storage space with business, and also for unit spaces for the four, six units above. Now, the first floor is gonna be occupied by two units. Those units are approximately each one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. They are three-bedroom units, two baths, with the living, dining, combined kitchen area being a large, open, open space area. The second floor is going to exactly mirror the, exactly the same size as the first floor. Again, it's gonna have two units each. Each unit, again, is gonna be one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet, with each unit having two full baths, well, one full bath.
So Mr. Pratt, so basically, all are three bedrooms, and all are about a thousand one fifty square feet?
Yes.
Okay, so tell us about the parking. Where is the parking supposed to be located?
The parking is located in the rear of the building off of Wombach Street. And we propose six parking spaces. I think the code calls for three, based on the office space being reduced. However, Frank's use of the basement for his business is gonna be very minimal. It's gonna be small office space is downsizing. So the need for the seven spaces, the extra space, may not be a problem. There's six spaces.
So hold on, hold on. Tell us which drawing we should look at to understand how the parking is going to work?
Can you go back to page one? Yes, yes. There, again, to the rear of the building, assuming that the front of the building is facing Lowell Avenue, the right side of the building actually faces Wombach. There would be two parking spaces off of Wombach. Now, the parking area is actually existing and paved, with again, with existing curb cuts, one curb cut off of Wombach Street, providing access to the six parking spaces with a new trash enclosure added.
Okay, I got it. So that's why they're calling it a front yard parking, is because it's a corner lot and space six could be construed as front yard parking? And tell us about the, is there a roof deck proposed?
No, there isn't. The third floor actually is an existing gable roof. If we could, an existing gable roof. The existing gable roof will be demolished and taken off, and a new roof installed, a new mansard roof is gonna be installed, which makes it really, the reason for the mansard is that it would be consistent with some of the larger residential buildings on Warren Street, which are, which have mansard roofs. So the idea is to blend this building in with the existing residential building on Warren Street.
Plans, Mr. Robinson?
I think generally, the plans are fine. I guess I probably have a little bit of a, not, we're taking a beautiful Victorian that looks like in some pretty good shape, and taking all the detail off and creating a box is what it appears to be doing to meet all the requirements of the proposal. So I guess I'm a little bit disappointed in terms of the direction it's going from the proposal. But I don't have any questions on the actual proposed scope of work in terms of the conversion, just more the method of how it's going about, so.
Got it. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was held on April sixth, and the applicants met with the abutters and also met with Garrison Trotter and worked with them to receive their support. A letter of support from Garrison Trotter was submitted to the board. And at this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Ms. Ambassador, are we all good?
All good, Madam Chair, no hands raised.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve what BPDA design review, to try to maintain as much detail as possible of the existing building.
Is there a second?
I guess I'll second that.
Okay, Fortune?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Nay.
Nay, Rajo also in support. So motion carries. Mr. Pratt, you've been before us before. Just make sure, and I know Mr. Thomas is a very well-known, respected, somebody in the construction trade. So just make sure that as many of the details of the buildings are as maintained as possible, especially through design review. Thank you.
Madam, we agree. He's aware that the siding is staying the same, a lot of window details is staying the same in the corner treatment of some of the corner space. So he has agreed to maintain as much of the detail as possible. The only difference is changing the roof structure.
Got it, okay. So motion carries, on to the next case.
On the next case, calling BOA 1365760, 183 Fuller Street. Construct a new three-family dwelling violates Article sixty-five, section eight. Three-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section eight, accessory parking is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the flood area ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address, further, Eric, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andrew Litchfield at 22 Alpha Road in Dorchester.
So tell us first the size of the lot. We know the zoning is a two F five thousand. And tell us what you're proposing, and tell us the variation from the zoning that each of the violations cited, what the violation is.
Of course, of course. So I'm proposing a three-family. The lot size is four thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Currently, it's an empty vacant lot right now. Proposing a two-bedroom on the first floor, which is nine hundred and seventy-five square feet. A two-bedroom, two-bath on the second floor, nine hundred and seventy-five square feet. And then a one-bedroom, one and a half bathroom on the third floor, which is a thousand square feet. Proposing four off-street parking spots.
I'm sorry, you have your one bedroom as a thousand square feet, and your two bedrooms is nine seventy-five?
Yes, so there's a nice office space in the back that goes out to an outdoor space, if you want to take a quick look at that. But yeah, that is the current configuration.
And we should be looking at, and tell us how parking is supposed to work?
Yeah, so this is the plan for the second and third floor. If you go back, I think, two slides, it'll show you the parking configuration. Keep going back a little bit further. Right here is the ground floor, the parking configuration. So driveway on the left-hand side, and four parking spaces in the rear. There's that one parking space, it'll be compact, that is the two decks above that to create some more outdoor open space for the new owners. And then the left-hand, or the right-hand side of the property line will be, there's a couple of trees that we'll be keeping and adding a few more. So that's pretty much the setup of the site.
So this is a two F five thousand. So to build a one or a two, you need five thousand. You're at four thousand two hundred and fifty, and you're proposing a three-family on the site, basically.
Yeah, so I...
The question I have, too, is that, tell us about the screening and buffering on all sides? Because you do have, I assume, a rear abutter and an abutter on the other side?
Yes, so I don't know if my architect, Eric Zacherson, is here to share a little bit of the screen and buffering.
Yes, Andrew, Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, so this is Eric Zacherson, 9 Sacramento Street, Charlestown. We will be having a privacy fence along the driveway side. And then on the rear of the property, the privacy fence will continue around the property, but at the rear and on the right side, there's... there's, uh, there's a space for, uh, some, um, greenery. Um, we could potentially have some, uh, smaller trees in that zone. We do not have a landscape plan at this time.
Um, and it just looks like from the layout of that last parking spot, the one abutting the building is, um, more than compact. I mean, um, it's just the abutting somebody's window like that. Um, any options that you, um, checked out to accommodate the parking in a different way?
We didn't, but the, um, the first floor is raised a bit above the parking, uh, area. I don't have a number offhand, but, um, the building itself is, is kind of a little bit above, above grade in a way that most of our projects are not. We've accommodated that by having, in order to have a little raised porch and a ramp up to it. So the window would be, uh, I believe would be higher than the car itself.
Okay. Uh, how are the plans, um, uh, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are, uh, plans are fine. Uh, again, no pro- uh, sorry, question about the proposal. I do think the site plan could use some work in terms of its abutting. It, it is right up against another house on the left. So, um, I think we could put a, a good proviso on this, but no questions on the proposal.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric James on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for one eighty-three Fuller Street had a butters meeting on May fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, they also had a background consensus from the Dunn Association, who ultimately decided to oppose the project citing parking issues and development of buildings with too many units and bedrooms in small lots. Um, the director butters have given letters of su- two letters of support and one letter of opposition. And, um, at this time, the, uh, Office of Neighborhood Services is electing to divert, to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
So tell us again of what the neighbor, what the neighborhood association's name is and how, how they, they voted?
My apologies. It is the Dorchester Unified Neighborhood Association, or the Dunn Association for short. And they voted to oppose the project citing parking issues and development of buildings with too many, uh, units.
Thank you.
Chair, Secretary here. We do have a few letters of support.
Okay. Ms. Ambassador, any more raised hands?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
Um, um, Mr. Hampton from the BPDA, was there a recommendation from the, from-
Uh, there was, Madam Chair, members of board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommended approval with design review. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a question, please?
Sorry to interrupt. I don't think my hand was, my hand raised was seen. Uh, my name is BJ Swabi.
Say it. Please put your name and address on the record.
Yes, my name is, uh, BJ Swabi. I am the Director of State Engagement for the District Four City Council, uh, Council Brian Morell. Um, and we would like to oppose this project just due to the communities, uh, or the community organization of the Dorchester Unified Neighborhoods, uh, uh, disapproval of the project. Uh, a lot of the same things were stated with the accessory parking, the project being too large and not really fitting the, uh, not really fitting the neighborhood. Uh, so we would like to oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. Um, I think it does, uh, generally fit within the context. I think the, it does need some BPDA design review for the site planning. Um, and I, I think a good look at the parking configuration and layout, um, makes some sense to me, so.
Is there a second?
Sorry. Uh, Madam Chair, before you put it to a vote, Mr. Robinson, since they have four and that compact one is kind of quirky where it is.
Yep.
We were to remove it, just saying hypothetically, it would not trigger a violation because they're only required to have three.
Three, right.
So I wanna, uh, put that out there because in case that does come up during design review, it would not trigger coming back to you guys for zoning relief. I just wanted to make that clear.
I'm comfortable with that because I think that might help the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a, um, a motion, there's a second. Um, Fortune?
Aye.
Rogiro?
Nay.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo's nay, so it's denied without prejudice.
Following the next case, calling DOA one two six three four two nine, three twenty-nine, Galvin Boulevard. Mister raise the existing six-unit structure, construct a new nine-unit, eight-unit, and a residential building with nine off-street parking spaces. Increase to eleven spaces. Nine, with nine, nine off-street parking. The violation is sixty-
Fuck!
Article sixty-five, section two, conforming with the existing building alignment. Article sixty-five, section eight, multifamily use is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy with the business address of one sixty-eight Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. Uh, with me today is the owner-
Oh, sorry, uh, Mr. Spitz, this is not necessarily referring to you, but I just need to let all pe- all applicants here who are here for eleven-thirties that this is a six-member board and you need five members, um, in support for your project to fly. Um, so you have the option, if you so desire, to take an administrative deferral for a later date when there is a full seven-member board. Um, Mr. Spitz, if you're gonna go ahead, Counselor Spitz, if you're gonna go ahead, uh, tell us why you were deferred the last time and, um, proceed with your presentation.
We, we are going to proceed. Uh, the last time for the deferral, uh, the description was inaccurate. It was from the original proposal, not the revised proposal. And that's what, um, Secretary Fortune just actually read into record again. Um, so we have the updated, uh, list here, which was properly mailed out, uh, describing, uh, the changes made, uh, to the actual plans going from eight units and eleven parking spaces versus the nine units of what was read into the record.
And, and so the violations that are, that were read are still the violations that stand?
Yes, I believe, I believe still, they, they kind of went pretty fast. Um, but again, I, that was notified and-
Yeah, okay, because we, we did get the eight, we understand it's proposed eight units and it's proposed eleven spaces. So go ahead and track to us what's, what's in front of us.
Right. With me today is the owner Francis Clegg, as well as James Christopher from six eight six Architects. Uh, this proposal is to raise the existing dilapidated six-unit structure and erect a new three-story building with eight dwelling units, eleven off-street, eleven below-grade parking spaces on a corner lot, utilizing an existing curb cut off of Hutchinson Street on an eight thousand three hundred and eighty-five square foot lot. Proposal is located within a two F five thousand sub-district. Six units, uh, the, I, um, correct me. Uh, the eight units will range from approximately one thousand sixty square feet to thirteen hundred and fifty-five square feet. The basement will consist of eleven below-grade parking spaces. Four of those parking spaces will be at eighteen feet by seven feet and six inches. And seven of those will be at twenty feet by eight feet, six inches.
Okay, just let's back up for a minute. So this proposed elevator building, how, what's, what's the breakdown on bedrooms?
Uh, bedrooms, they're gonna be seven two-bedroom units and one three-bedroom unit. The first floor will consist of three two-bedrooms with balconies, uh, facing Hutchinson Street. Uh, the second floor will consist of three two-bedrooms with balconies again facing Hutchinson Street. On the third floor, uh, there'll be one three-bedroom and one two-bedroom. Both will have balconies. The third floor, uh, from the plans that you'll see is there, the third floor level is set back, uh, from Galvin Boulevard.
And is there a roof deck proposed?
Yes, there, there are balconies up there, which we refer to, um, on the third floor. So the, the front balcony will be approximately about twenty-seven feet, four inches by five feet, six inches. That's gonna be specifically allocated exclusively to unit number seven. Uh, the other two, which will be on the rear and the side, are gonna be exclusively to unit eight. Um, the rear one will be approximately four, fourteen feet by two inches and by ten feet, nine inches. And then the side one will be five foot, six inches by thirty-nine feet, six inches.
Okay, uh, Counselor, just let's ask you a couple more questions. Um, tell us about the, the, the yards that are abutting, um, the, the abutting buildings. Um, tell us what the distance is from this proposed building to our butters.
Yep, so, so on, if, if I'm looking at the building head-on from Galvin Street to the right of the property on Galvin, we're-
So tell us, so please tell us which drawing is the best to look at?
Um, I'm gonna refer to, um, drawing-
Uh, go, go, uh, up one, A four. Actually, if you go to that, that first drawing, Madam Chair, the all one, I think that's easiest way to talk about, um, I think setback, oh, site plan, there you go, right there. Site plan shows it as well. So we're facing the building on the left side to our butter. We're eleven foot, um, I'm sorry, I can't read that. Eleven foot, uh, nine, I believe. Then the building has a twenty-five foot setback along Galvin, which steps forward to fifteen feet at the corner. And then as we come around the corner, we go down to, uh, six feet, uh, at that bay, that first bay. The general setback along that is eight feet. And then to the rear yard, uh, we have a five-foot setback. Uh, and from the abutting buildings, uh, on Galvin Boulevard to our left, uh, I believe that the setback on the opposite side, the, to our butter, to his building is about ten feet.
So tell us about Hutchinson. What's the distance between the parking line to the building?
From our building to the parking line is, uh, five feet, Madam Chair.
Okay, and what's, so it looks like your abutting building on the other side is about five feet.
It's about the same, that's correct.
Okay. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Um, plans are good, um, in terms of what's being proposed. I, I was wondering the same, um, if maybe this could just slide toward Galvin a little bit to give some, a little bit more relief toward the rear of Butter. It would be one of my questions to, uh, the proponent because I do think there is some space there that might be better utilized for the rear of Butter just to give them a little, real, a little width. Um, building does step back there, so it's not a hard wall. I see there's some balconies and so, um, that was kind of really my only question if we could maybe massage. And the other one was on the twenty-foot curb cut. I guess I just don't know. It, it seems big, but maybe that's what's needed for that. So tho- those are my only two little questions.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Uh, on the curb cut, uh, it's existing and, and we're matching that, um, opening. So we just felt like it was a viable, um, uh, entry and access point. There's no parking on that side of the street as well. Um, on the siding of the building, uh, we can certainly accommodate addressing it more towards Galvin Boulevard through the community process. Um, we, we discussed a lot of the, the corner and the nose of the building. We had several iterations of the design. Um, and this is the one that the abutters and the civic group seemed to like the most. So that's the direction that we went in, but there is certainly space to address the siding.
Thank you. No other questions.
Any other ques- any questions from the board?
Yeah, I realize that this has been reduced from nine to eight units, but looking around the neighborhood, that seems way out of character with, uh, with the, uh, the other buildings, um, uh, of other abutting buildings. Am I wrong about that?
Um, this is the largest site in that area, Mr. Ehrlich. There are several multifamilies in the area. Um, the building that exists in a much smaller footprint is six units. Um, so they're, they're in the immediate area, I don't think that there's, uh, similar building, but, you know, working with, with the site that we have and, and the existing, uh, use, um, and that it was supported by the butters and civic group, we felt it was appropriate.
In a very close block in proximity to, uh, the train, local train station as well in Ashplum.
No, I roll my eyes every time I hear that. Sorry, Counselor. Um, any, uh, I'm sorry, I was a little unclear. There is no roof deck, but there are balconies, right?
That's correct, Madam Chair. There is no common roof deck on the upper roof. Uh, on the, on the setbacks of the, uh, roof of the second floor, uh, are where the, uh, the balconies are.
Okay, and, um, is this a hundred percent electric building?
Uh, we haven't gone through the engineering. It's not designed to be that way as of yet, but, uh, we will certainly accommodate everything that we can, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held a meeting for the proposal in November of last year and June of this year. Abutters initially mentioned concerns regarding parking on Galvin Boulevard, which the pro- proponent has helped address by reducing the units and adding parking. Because abutters also expressed concern regarding the area facing their home. Um, and the lack of uniform green space on the other side. Um, the Lower Mill Civic Association has written a letter of support. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, um, we do have those letters that the mayor's office just wrote up.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeppert, City Council, Frank Baker's office would like to go in record in support of the applicant.
Uh, Mr. Hampton, did the BPDA have a recommendation?
Aye, yes, sorry, Madam Chair, members of board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommended, uh, approval with design review on this case.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Madam Chair, in support.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Ambassador, that covers everybody?
Yes, no raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, um, with BPDA design review for, I guess, building siding, um, to see if we can, uh, give it a little relief to that rear of Butter. Um, and then also, I think, uh, a nice landscape plan will help this, uh, project as well, so.
I'll second that.
Um, Fortune?
Aye.
Rogiro?
Joe, aye.
Olick?
Um, reluctantly, aye. It seems too dense, but.
Dong? Got it.
Aye.
Uh, Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo is also aye, so motion carries with those provisos and those concerns.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Following the next case, calling DOA one two seven nine six three seven, one eighty-five London Street. Madam Chair, we have a letter from the applicant. They are withdrawing, so I'm gonna make a motion into denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those, um, Fortune?
Aye.
Rogiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also aye. Motion carries.
Following the next case, calling DOA one two eight zero three nine two, three thirty-three, Threeport Street. This is to change architecture to have his two-family converted to a mixed-use with first-floor commercial space for body passing, jewelry, art gallery, and local artists. The second floor will be for residential use. Violate Article sixty-five, section fifteen, use is forbidden. Name and address for the record.
Is the applicant here for this, um, for this project?
Madam Chair, no one, um, none of us in for the pre-check-in.
Okay, let's move to the next one, to Jones, uh, please.
Calling, calling DOA one two nine eight four zero nine, twenty-one Jones Avenue. This is erect a new three-story, three-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Violation, Article sixty, section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, section forty-one point one, conforming with the existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary, Attorney Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Dan Torpe, one seventy-five State Street, fifteenth floor, Boston. Um, I have also be, should be as a panelist, should be the architect, Christopher Drew. On the call as well are the owners of the, of the, uh, lot, uh, and that's Joseph Snow and Lucian McPherson. I believe, I'm gonna have, uh, Architect Drew, uh, speak to the, the proposal, but I believe that he's going to say that that last, um, um, Mr. Fortune, there's only one violation that we have. We have a new letter that's dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, but I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, Mr. Drew to speak to that, that the one with the Article sixty with the modal, uh, conforming with the building alignment, uh, is not, no longer an issue in this particular matter and we would ask that it not be considered here. But, Mr. Drew, can you proceed with the, with the presentation?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Feaster. Uh, Chris Drew from six eight six Architects, uh, eleven fifty-six Dorchester Avenue. Uh, what we're proposing is a three-family residence on- Uh, what we're proposing is a three-family residence on existing vacant lot. Pretty simple, each unit itself is three bedrooms, two baths, about eleven-hundred-and-one-ninety-four square feet. Uh, the first floor will be fully accessible, uh, the basement will consist of storage and mechanicals, and we have, uh, three off-street parking spaces in the rear. Um, our only violation is the additional lot area, although it is a three F five thousand, it is one of those weird areas where it is a three F five thousand, but it asks for an additional twenty-five hundred square feet for the existing, for the three-family lot itself.
What, what's the size of this lot, Mr. Drew?
The, the size of the lot is five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifteen square feet.
Okay, got it. Um, three bedrooms, uh, how many baths did you say?
Uh, two baths per unit, so a master suite and then a common bath.
Okay, and the screen, and is that, um, curb carded, cut existing?
Uh, no, that would be a new curb cut.
Okay, and, um, tell us, so you have then with this drawing met conformity with building alignment?
Correct, yes. When the original application was filed, um, the surveyor hadn't had a chance to do that work yet, and we had gotten their files to get it in, and then we subsequently amended the plans just to show them conformity, and then violation was removed.
Okay, thank you, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, extremely straightforward, no questions.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, we do have that letter dated July thirteen, so there is only one violation.
Thank you. Um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam, Madam Chair, this is Attorney Feaster, I just wanted to put on the record that the, my, uh, my client did meet with the Woodrow Avenue Neighborhood Association. There, we have support from the residents at twenty, thirty-nine, forty, and twenty-one, uh, Jones Avenue.
Thank you, uh, Mr., thank you, thank you.
Madam, we do have support letters, Secretary here.
Uh, is anybody here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services?
Yep, good morning, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board, the applicant for twenty-one Jones, uh...
Please, please, uh, put your name and address, uh, yeah, at least your name on the record.
Sorry, uh, my, Eric James here for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, the applicant for twenty-one Jones Ave had an abutters meeting on May fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. They also met with the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association on March seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two. The neighborhood associations decided to support, uh, and they also have two letters of support and five letters, no, one letter of support and one letter of opposition. Uh, one letter of support signed by four abutters, thank you. And at this moment, we are aiming to defer judgment to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, Councilwoman, record, support.
There are no raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second that, Eric.
Fortune?
Aye.
Rogiro?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, so motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next two cases, calling DOA one-three-three-zero-four-two-nine, ten Woodford Street. The companion case, DOA one-three-three-zero-four-three-one, thirty-four, Woodford Street. This is for ten Woodford, erect a new four-story residential with four dwelling units, roof deck, on existing vacant lot. Violation Article fifty, section twenty-eight, a multi-family dwelling, sufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, lot width is insufficient. Article fifty is section twenty-nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the floor area is excessive. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the building has excess. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the building has excessive in stories. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, usable open spaces insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article fifty, section forty-three, off-street parking is insufficient.
Uh, Madam Chair, the next two cases, I will be recusing myself.
Both, both Woodford?
Yes.
Okay, so just, is there, is there somebody here representing Volney Capital?
Yes, hi, Madam Chair, Jeff Drago.
Uh, Mr. Drago, so this is a six-member board. Without, um, Mr. Rogiro, it's a five-member board. Um, and you would need all five members in support. Um, given the situation, you may request an administrative deferral, or you may proceed.
We will proceed, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, thirty-four Woodford Street has the same purpose and the same violations, so I'm not gonna read them into the record.
Thank you, saving a breath, that makes sense. Okay, um, if you are proceeding, please, um, um, tell us why you were deferred before, um, and tell us what's being proposed, and talk us through it.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, last time, there was also a short board, that was the reason, a smaller board, that is why we deferred last time. We, again, Jeff Drago, Drago Escano, with the business address of eleven Beacon Street, representing Volney Capital. We also have, um, Eric Zacherson from Context, is the architects in the project. As was mentioned, uh, they are identical proposals for both ten and thirty-four. The proposal is to erect new, uh, a new four-unit condominium building at both ten and thirty-four.
Uh, yeah, so please start off, and tell us what the zoning district is.
So it's a three-F four-thousand, Madam Chair. We are proposing four units on each vacant parcel, they're both...
And what's the square footage at ten, and what's the square footage at thirty-four?
So, ten is two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-three square feet. Thirty-four is two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet.
Sorry, two-thousand-five-hundred and what?
Sixty-nine.
Okay, so the basic zoning for one or two family is four thousand, and you're coming in with four units on two-thousand-square-foot lots?
It's a three-F four-thousand, that's, that's correct.
Um, mister, mister, um, Hampton, uh, four thousand, is that for three units, or one and two?
I will double-check, uh, for you in two minutes.
Okay, in the meantime, go ahead, mister, um...
Sure.
Go ahead.
So the, the project at ten Woodford, Madam Chair, that is gonna propose four-unit condo, one of those units, the developer has agreed with the community for a deed-restricted affordable unit at eighty percent AMI as part of this project. The layout of that building, the first floor will have main entrance and unit one, uh, which is a thousand-square-foot, two-bedroom, two-bath, that is the affordable unit. Uh, unit two is a thousand-square-foot, two-bedroom, two-bath with a front deck. Uh, unit three is a thousand-square-foot, two-bed, two-bath with a front deck. And unit four is a thousand-square-foot, two-bed, two-bath with a front deck. That unit would also have a roof deck, um, accessed by the rear stair. The building at thirty-four Woodford...
Hold on, tell us how pa- parking is supposed to work?
So there is, there's no parking on the site, Madam Chair, so it's a shorter lot.
And so also that means there'll be no, um, loading, loading will be off the street?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so go ahead to thirty-four, please.
Thirty-four is also four units, um, similar layout, identical layout. The units are slightly larger, uh, they're twelve-hundred-and-seventy-five square foot, two-bedroom, two-bath. They all have front deck with an exclusive roof deck on the top floor. The roof decks are four-hundred-and-eighty square feet for both of the buildings.
And is there an affordable at forty, thirty-four?
There isn't, there's one affordable for the whole, uh, eight units.
Okay, um, and is, then there's no parking on this either?
There is not, no, both of these are vacant lots, no, as they stand.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are as submitted, so they're, look good, no questions, I mean, there's no, there's nothing surprising, it's pretty straightforward in terms of what's being proposed, so no questions on the plans.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Jeff, I have that information, you want it?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, so in Roxbury, the three F four thousand, it's four thousand for one or two units, and then two thousand for each additional unit?
Okay, so, and so that for four units, you'd need...
Eight, eight thousand.
Eight thousand, so this is, uh, two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-three.
And for the record, the BPDA, uh, recommends approval with design review on these properties.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, um, yeah, um, let's see, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition, Ms. Ambassador?
Yes, I have one raised hand. Minor, uh, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, mine up, representing the Carpenters Union. Uh, we are, the entire membership that lives in the city of Boston wants to go and support this project, and we really appreciate the sensitivity of the developer to our matters, thank you.
Um, good, sorry. Madam Chair, members of the board, Keisha Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, an abutters meeting was held, and there is no opposition, um, to the project, and at this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you, anybody from, um, anybody from the, from the council's office? Okay, um, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second that, Eric.
Madam Chair, this is Tom. Can I ask that the board include a proviso to identify the affordable units in the building? It's gonna be, uh, whatever, whichever, whichever unit it's gonna be, it's five, five, so I...
That was, that was unit one at ten Woodford.
I'll be happy to include that in the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
So the motion is for approval with design review, is there a second?
I'll second, Eric.
Fortune?
Aye.
Rogiro?
He was cue, uh...
Oh, sorry, cue, sorry, that's right, Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Arajo is, um, extremely reluctantly in support. Um, this is just a note to, um, the attorney and Volney Capital that, in fact, uh, if the, look carefully at the zoning, because this is unnecessarily creating density for our neighborhood, but I wanna make sure it's not exploited in any way, especially with no parking for new construction proposed here. Um, so, um, you know, this is a pass in a certain way. So it's been, um, with all the votes, approved with design review, good luck.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna go back to a case we called earlier, DOA one-two-eight-zero-three-nine-two, thirty-three, thirty-three, Freeport Street. Is anybody on from Freeport Street? Madam Chair, it's now one-twelve, I'm gonna make a motion to deny without prejudice.
I'll second that, Eric.
Fortune?
Aye.
Rogiro?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries, Arajo also in support, so motion carries.
Madam Chair, the reconsideration, calling case DOA one-one-seven-three-five-nine-nine, five-thirty-five to five-thirty-seven V Washington Street. For consideration of the board's decision to deny the conditional use permit to operate a cannabis establishment on five-thirty-five, five-thirty-seven V Washington Street, right, the applicant has requested the board reconsider its decision in light of the relevant case law from the Massachusetts Court that was not available at the time of the board's decision. Name and address for the record.
Yes, hello, uh, this is attorney Mike Ross, uh, from the law firm of Prince Lobel with the business address of One International Place in Boston. The letter I submitted to you on August fifth contains, um, the essential arguments that we wish to make, but in summary, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, and, and good afternoon to all of you. The, um, the case was heard on July twelfth. Literally days after the case was heard, uh, first on July twenty-first, and then on July twenty-eighth. Uh, two significant cases were, um, were ruled on by one, the SJC, and the other, the Suffolk Superior Court, that are directly on point, uh, to this, and, uh, and worth, uh, worth just briefly discussing. The second issue is that I submitted the seventy-five-page traffic study, uh, which I think does a far better job of explaining what I attempted to explain in a very short period of time at the July twelfth hearing.
And you submitted this, I'm sorry, and you submitted this on July fifth?
Uh, August fifth was the letter, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, August fifth.
And the, the, the traffic study, as I mentioned in the hearing, in summary, it, it, it says that there are adequate facilities, that the, uh, traffic, uh, is not going to be overwhelmed by this facility, and that the parking exists, uh, in the, within the area, uh, on, um, publicly available, uh, parking on the street. That's essentially what this says, but I, I wanted to at least submit with more time and context, Mr. Robinson.
Yes, so I, I've looked at your letter, um, and so you, um, are referring to the two decisions that came down. Please tell us what their relevance is to this case, that we should reconsider this, uh, we should vote today whether to reconsider the case.
I will, thank you. So, very briefly, uh, the first case, uh, decided on, uh, July twenty-first, was called Basque v. the City of Taunton, where the city council, um, voted against one applicant that had, due to traffic concerns, and then, uh, shortly thereafter, voted for a nearby applicant that actually had more severe traffic issues associated with that. And there, the SJC, which is significant, um, said that that's a legally untenable position, that in a situation where you have, um, similarly situated applicants, which these cannabis establishments are, they're, they're very similarly situated, you cannot, you have to, you have to consider past decisions. Uh, more recently...
So, so, so tell me what the relevance is to, um, distance, so what is another, um, Alston case that we have looked at, where there is that similarity in lack of parking, that is, um, that is relevant to this case?
Right, thank you, um, good question. Yeah, so it's, for example, HVV Massachusetts, uh, Inc., which is located in nineteen thirty-seven Beacon Street in Brighton. Um, that was approved with zero parking spaces, and that's significant. Uh, the other thing that is significant is that numerous applicants come before this board and do not provide any form of traffic study. They do provide, in this case, we did provide a fair, a fairly thorough traffic study. As it relates to the parking, we do have four parking spaces on this site, and we have, um, secure loading on this site. The other, um, and there are numerous cases, um, uh, distinctions of approved applicants as compared to this particular applicant, is, um, is size of facility. We know that, um, the board in the past has approved smaller facilities that do not have adequate queuing, um...
So, I'm sorry, so is size one of the issues raised in Taunton, in the Basque versus Taunton? Or was it just generally traffic?
Traffic was what was raised in Basque versus Taunton, but it was more specifically raised in Holland Brands, which is the second case that occurred on July twenty-eighth. And in Holland Brands versus the ZBA, um, the court stated there that in the case of the Holland Brands application, there were numerous, um, amenities that the, um, that the applicant had, such as queuing area, such as parking spaces, such as a, a traffic study, such as a security study, all of which, um, were deemed to be more substantial than other, uh, applications that had come before the board that didn't have those types of things. And here, with five-thirty-five Washington Street, the size of a facility, proximity to, um, a local community, all the things that one could measure when they consider, uh, these items, is, is, in general, um, has, has a stronger, uh, set of these amenities, queuing space, the fact that it does have some... fact that it does have some parking, the fact that there is available on-street parking, whereas many parts of the city, there is no availability of the on-street parking where approved applicants have occurred. In all those cases, what we have is a is a is a very strong contender, and certainly one that meets the definition and the needs of the conditional use permit. At the hearing on July twelfth, I think you allowed me to kind of conclude, and I said, you know, I would just follow the conditional use permit rules, and I think there was a certain amount of leap of faith there, because we didn't have such clear and distinct cases that that came down and basically said what these two cases said, Basque and Holland Brands. But now I come to you with an objective set of cases to say that where you have a strong applicant, even though there might be, say, neighborhood opposition, neighborhood opposition is not something that is considered within the conditional use permit. Here, where there is no buffer zone violation, and where other buffer zone violations are being approved within the city, and on and on, this is a very strong contender for approval for the conditional use permit. The fact that it wasn't approved, it then invites the looking at other cases that were approved, since these are similarly situated.
Okay, thank you. I will I will just try to be succinct, that it is the Board of Appeals' role to look at land use impacts and implications of these these cannabis establishments. We request that the app can put all the details on hours of operation, size, security, and everything on the record for those who are participating in our meetings who have not had a chance to understand what the project is. So that is that is the reason we spend so much time walking through this. And I and I'm actually, I do have, and I've read Holland Holland Brands versus City of Boston zoning Board of Appeals, and I do think there is a difference here in that this clearly is a smaller establishment. However, and and this is different from other projects that we've looked at, because as we look at a project in a neighborhood context, nineteen thirty-seven Beacon Street, for example, there is a difference in that it is much more proximate to public transportation than Oak Square is. And, you know, that also the difference is, yes, there may be parking being provided on-site for for this particular project. However, the 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 issue might be that, in fact, those parking spaces may need to go to for a handicap person, or most most likely for staff. So so there is just, you know, I think location is important, and to understand that everything is kept in context. So that's why I'm taking the few minutes to kind of walk through from our perspective what the difference is on these projects. We are not we are not arbitrary and capricious. We do look at it very closely, and we we clearly understand that cannabis is approved in the Commonwealth. That's not something we use as our our yardstick at all. We just look at it from a zoning perspective as a land use a land use impact impact project. So I've said enough. Is and is there anything else anybody would like to add?
I mean, are you asking me or members of the board?
No, 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 I'd like to ask the board members. Thank you, counselor. I think you did a very good job and succinctly highlighting what's pertinent to this case. Anything else that the board members would like to add?
I just.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Rogiro?
Yeah, I I just, um, I I I lean towards it, but the clarification from the court cases, I do lean towards it deserves reconsideration, particularly, you know.
Well, I'm going to be.
If another if another if another business establishment, non-cannabis, would go there, like, I just don't see how we could say that that same establishment wouldn't cause similar traffic and flow issues.
I think it I think it really would depend on what the the business was, you know, and and I do think there's a difference between the the Holland Brand versus this one in that that property had the parking. It had it was surrounded by industrial and commercial uses on three sides, whereas this is just part of a strip of commercial use on Washington Street, but abutted by residential use, you know, so.
Arrest her on, you know.
So anyway, so I hear you, Mr. Rogiro. Any other comments? Okay, let's move to a vote whether to to reconsider this case and go to a full hearing for reconsideration or not. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
I'll second that, Eric.
Okay, all those in favor?
Look, we got a roll call.
I'm sorry, Fortune?
Aye.
Rogiro?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
I vote in opposition to the reconsideration, but motion carries, so we will reconsider the case at a date to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I ask all board members to stay on, and may I ask Mr. Hampton to stay on?
Recording stopped.